To order on August 4th. So Deputy Clerk of the Board, could you conduct a roll call?
Yes, good morning. Supervisor Brown?
Here.
Supervisor McCowen?
Here.
Chair hashtag?
Deputy Clerk of the Board?
Supervisor Journey?
Here.
And Supervisor Williams?
Here.
Thank you, good morning.
Guess we have a little technology drama right now. Deputy Clerk of the Board?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay.
I can hear you.
Chair hashtag, can you hear everyone else?
Hi Chair hashtag.
Do you need me to play Chair for you?
Actually, we have a Vice Chair.
Chair hashtag, can you hear the other Board members?
Okay, how's that?
All right. Can everyone hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes.
And I can hear you too, great.
Great.
Okay, very good. All right, so Deputy Clerk of the Board, could you conduct the roll call?
Yes, let's do this. Okay Supervisor Brown?
Here.
Supervisor McCowen?
Here.
Chair hashtag?
Here.
Supervisor Journey?
Here.
And Supervisor Williams?
Here.
Thank you, good morning.
All right, good morning, everyone. So Supervisor Brown, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, it would be my honor. Everyone, be prepared to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute, ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, thank you Supervisor Brown. I'd just like to note that that in order to speak via telecomment, one must submit a speaker form online before 8:00 AM the day of the meeting. The link to the telecomment request forms can be found on both the first and last pages of the meeting agenda and on the Board of Supervisors website under Agenda and Minutes and Public Engagement. If you have submitted a telecomment request for either public expression or Consent Calendar, please call in now. And before we go to the public expression, which we have a few of, I'd just like to say that on August 18th, we are going to have a special recognition of the nursing students who are working with OptumServe this summer, doing surveillance testing and all the other things associated with COVID-19 testing. And two of those students aren't going to be here on the 18th. That's Hannah Acevedo and Shelby Todd, they will be going back to college. And so we certainly appreciate their work on behalf of the whole community in trying to get the testing, which is so necessary for our COVID-19 response. So thank you Hannah and Shelby, and best of luck in your continued studies as you pursue a career in nursing. And we hope that this experience this summer has inspired you to greater things in the nursing world. So thank you. With that, we will go to public expression. We have a few people. We have Monique Ramirez. And before we do the public expression, I'd just like to say, we do have a lot of comments on the issues today. We have a full schedule, and so we are going to keep those comments to three minutes each. At two and a half minutes, the Speaker will hear a comment from the Deputy Clerk of the Board, who will give notification that there are 30 seconds left. And at three minutes, you will be cut off. So that's the way we have to do it in this virtual world, and I hope that works. So with that, Monique Ramirez. Good morning.
This is Deputy Clerk Lindsay Dunham. Monique, you're muted.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Monique Ramirez, I'm in District 3. Today, I just wanted to bring to attention the fact that we have a trash problem in Covelo that is really bad. We have so many more people than we've ever had before, and I believe that that's what's causing this issue with our trash not being able to be taken by the dump. Because every time people go there, it fills up too fast. And so I know that Supervisor hashtag has been looking into this, but I'm wondering if there needs to be a review of the contract with Waste Management to increase the size of bins that are being provided for Covelo, because it doesn't meet the needs of our population at this point. And especially for people like myself that live in the rural parts of the hills, it takes me almost an hour just to get down the mountain to bring the trash. And to have to drive it further to Willetts just is kind of ridiculous. And so I just want to make the Board aware of that, and to see if the Board can do anything about it to try to get more services for Covelo. So and then later today, when you guys do speak to Agenda Item 5B, I just want to make sure that the discussion is fully had between the Board and staff before opening it up to public comment. Because sometimes in the past, when you guys deliberate on Agenda items, sometimes you guys go to public comment, and then when you go back into discussion, you end up bringing up brand-new points or things. And then we're sitting in the audience and we're unable to make comment on those new things that come to light. And so if you guys can have a full discussion, then we'll be able to give our best comment and response. And so I just want to make that statement. So thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you, Mo. And just for your information, I have been in touch with the Department of Transportation, who oversees the contract with the garbage, and we are working on what we can do and options for Covelo. Okay, next speaker is Ron Moorhead. Deputy Clerk, is Ron on the line?
Yes, he is. Mr. Moorhead, you are muted.
It just reloaded, so here I am, thank you very much. Speaking for the entire group of, can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. Group of Chambers of Commerce, we are grateful for the County of Mendocino for including us in the roundtable discussion on Friday, and allowing us the time to share the Mask Up Mendo program. In the excitement of sharing those details, I forgot to thank all of our many partners across the county that are helping with this great educational program. What makes Mask Up Mendo unique is that there are many organizations that typically work alone, are working in a collaboration across industry sectors. From healthcare to private business professional organizations and city governments, law enforcement agencies, nonprofits, and county offices. There is a great team effort going on for the public health, economic concerns, together with business, government, and law enforcement, as I said. Although the chambers have led the charge, nothing would be possible without the collaboration and the partnership that we have. And we want to thank all of our partners, especially to the gracious support of our sponsors, the County of Mendocino, EDFC, Visit Mendocino, the Adventist Health System, and all of the volunteers that will be coordinated through North Coast Opportunities. For those individuals that would like more information, go to our website, maskupmendo.com, or contact your local Chambers of Commerce. I would like to say that a little update on what we're doing. We're getting the mask and the sanitizer out to our distribution points. We have distributed over 32,000 masks already to those distribution points and local businesses. We are working very closely with NCO on the volunteer program, getting that ready to hit the streets very soon. So even though it has not actually gone through a grand opening, so to speak, we are getting the masks and sanitizers out there to the people that need it, and have had nothing but very positive remarks about the program and about all of our partners in that program. So thank you very much for the Supervisors, your backing. The County of Mendocino, we really appreciate it. And we see this program really making a difference in people wearing masks, and hopefully curbing COVID-19 here in the county. Thank you again.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Moorhead, and all your work with this. Next is David Gurney. Is David Gurney on the line?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we heard reports in the past two weeks that county administration is limiting staff time for Supervisors to one hour a week. Are you kidding? Supervisors that are actually doing county taxpayers and voters' work, like Mr. Williams, need more staff time to do their jobs, not less. It's obvious to many of us that the county is being run by a megalomaniac control freak. And we want our Supervisors to have more access to county human resources, not less, so that they can properly do their jobs. And it's time for you guys to stand up and demand that you have more access to staff time. Secondly, there was a major incident in Albion over the weekend. Where over a dozen law enforcement vehicles, including the sheriff's armored personnel carrier, came to subdue a subject armed with a Vic lighter. This person suffered severe injuries to his face after being sprayed with a fire hose and then attacked by a police dog. The circumstances surrounding this arrest have not been made public. And when a major incident like this occurs, it's the responsibility of the sheriff to issue a press release to explain to the public what happened. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. All right, moving on to Item 5, oh no. To Agenda Item Number 4, the Consent Calendar. Clerk, has proper notice been established?
Yes, proper notice has been established.
Okay, are there any items that you would like to poll? Hearing none? Okay, there's public, no public comment on this? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Okay, is there a second?
A second to the motion?
All right, so it's been moved by Supervisor Brown, seconded by Supervisor Journey. Deputy Clerk, could you conduct a roll call vote?
Yes. Supervisor Journey?
Yes.
Supervisor Williams?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor McCowen?
Yes.
And Chair hashtag?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item 5A, Discussion and Possible Action, including an update associated with the novel coronavirus COVID-19, including possible direction regarding essential services in Mendocino County, operational preparation and response, and associated countywide economic impacts. Sponsor is the Executive Office. So CEO Angelo?
Yes, Chair hashtag, thank you very much. This is our COVID update to this Board and to the public that we are attempting to do at every Board meeting. We have with us today Becky Emery, who will be doing the update around our statistics around COVID. I do not believe that Dr. Duhann is with us this morning. Additionally, we will have Deputy CEO Darcy Antle doing a very brief fiscal update, because we will be talking about COVID funding a little later this afternoon. This Board is very interested in enforcement of the public health orders, and we do have a good team as far as enforcement, and so there will be an update today from Sheriff Kendall, from Chief John Martier from the Special Investigations Unit, and also John Burks from Code Enforcement. Additionally, we have started a process with our business outbreaks, because we have had recently many business outbreaks. And so we have Trey Strickland, our Environmental Health Director, who will be talking about what his team does regarding the business outbreaks. One comment before I turn this over to Ms. Emery is there are multiple questions regarding the state watch list. And the latest press release that went out over the weekend did have a comparison of our local data that we collect regarding COVID statistics as far as positives, how many tests we're doing, our positivity rate, our deaths, hospitalizations. And it compared our local data with the state data. What we are hearing from the state at this point in time is that there are problems with data collection and data reporting throughout the state. So Mendocino County just happens to fall into that group of California counties whose data has not caught up at the state level. So regarding the state watch list, our data supports being on the state watch list. Again, we have talked with the state representatives many times, almost daily. But right now, we are not officially on the watch list. And so I do want to bring that to this Board's attention. And that reason is because of data collection problems. So with that, at this point in time, Chair hashtag, I would like to turn this over to Ms. Emery to give you an update.
Good morning, members of the Board, CEO Angelo, thank you for that introduction. And if I may, through the Chair, for Mendocino County, we currently have 331 cases of COVID-19. 66 individuals are currently in isolation as current and active cases. We have another 118 people in quarantine as close contacts to those individuals. And we are managing every single one of those individuals and checking in with them regularly to ensure that their temperatures and their medical checks are being done regularly, and referring to their physicians and care providers as needed. Additionally, we are, as CEO Angelo said, having regular meetings with the state on our data tracking. And we continue those meetings and are working through those processes in that effort to ensure that the state has accurate data for Mendocino County. We are also working to provide notices for negative test results through our call center. That number is 234-6052. And people that need a required notice to return to work of a negative test result, we are trying to provide that support there. As well as working with our clinic partners that have been phenomenal in the rollout of surveillance testing, to ensure that we are working through processes to be able to get results to them. We had a really good conversation this last week of problem solving and trying to come to solutions of how we can identify those tests that are specific to each of the clinics. I think that we've come up with a really great solution, courtesy of Lucretia, through MCC Mendocino Coast Clinic, that we are going to be working to implement, so that we can make sure that our clinic partners are able to get those test results back as quickly as possible from when we received the notices from the labs to them. So we're very excited about that and are working to get that implemented quickly. Additionally, we have been able, through a lot of work for Dr. Duhann, secured the Abbott machine, which will provide additional testing for symptomatic individuals on the coast. And Mendocino Coast Clinic is hosting that site at this point. And we will be able to support the additional need for testing through that effort. It is limited to 300 tests, and there are some challenges in getting additional cartridges. But at this point, that is still an excellent resource for us. We continue to work with community partners as to outbreaks and continuing to try to provide increased surveillance testing as well. We have an excellent partner in Consolidated Tribal Health Clinic, and the surveillance testing that they are providing through us. And in collaboration, this week, we will have testing in Leightonville. And last week, we had it at the Coyote Valley Casino as well. And we are continuing those efforts throughout the remainder of this fiscal year, or excuse me, this calendar year. We are also increasing and working through our enforcement efforts. Chief Martier will speak to that later, but has done a phenomenal job of ensuring seven-day-a-week coverage. And I really applaud the efforts of he and his team, and their ability to engage with the community and work in an educational, supportive manner to our community around COVID-19, and ensuring that the community is aware of the needs and best practices to help protect themselves and those around them. We have also activated our alternate care site and have staff at that facility for people in need of isolation and quarantine, and will continue those efforts. We are working through the processes of shifting those efforts over from other resources to ensure maximization of the site and utilization. And we continue to work with our community partners to be able to serve those individuals in the best way possible and ensure their well-being and safety. And so with that, I will turn this back over to CEO Angelo or Supervisor hashtag.
Supervisor hashtag, we could go to Deputy CEO Darcy Antle, if she is on the line.
And I'd just like to say thank you, Ms. Emery, for your work on this.
And if Darcy is not immediately on the line, then I suggest that maybe we go to Trey Strickland to do an update on the business outbreaks. Oh, Darcy's in, okay.
Good morning, Chair hashtag, this is Darcy Antle, Deputy CEO. I'm giving you a brief update, fiscal update. So really quickly, FEMA has granted 30 days extensions for two of our large projects. That would be the Great Plates to September 9th. That project's costing roughly $600,000 per month. And Project Room Key to August 30th. Locally, that project is ramping down as HHSA support through Megan Van Sant is working closely with those folks in transitioning them to more permanent-type housing. At this point, we have less than 10 rooms occupied for Project Room Key. The fiscal team continues to work diligently with departments to capture hours and track all the expenses related. And a shout out to the public health fiscal team for all their work on all these projects that we are doing. And again, a more detailed fiscal production would be shared this afternoon during the coronavirus relief report. So at this point, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair hashtag.
Okay, thank you. All right, is Mr. Strickland on the line?
Yes, thank you, Chair hashtag, Board Member CEO Angelo. This is Trey Strickland, Mendocino County Environmental Health Director. I've been working with Becky Emery and County Council Charlotte Scott to develop procedures for environmental health staff to follow after a business experiences three or more connected positive COVID-19 cases. Two main points taken into consideration are that the precautions and safety measures to minimize the risk and spread of COVID-19 are already well-known and well-publicized. By now, most people know that facial covering, social distancing, hand washing, cleaning, and disinfection are the standard mitigations to prevent the spread of COVID-19. So we want to ensure that's happening, but we also want to look at how it's being implemented and make sure that there's no exposure risks that are being overlooked. Secondly, employees spend most of their life away from work, where their employer has no control over how responsible they're acting in terms of preventing the spread of COVID-19. So when cases do pop up in a business, it's not necessarily because of a lack of safety measures being implemented there. So our process is collaborative, working with the business's staff to ensure that they're effectively implementing all the protocols that they should. And we specifically want to identify anything, any site-specific improvements that can be made. So environmental health staff will coordinate walk-through facility inspections with businesses that have had three or more connected positive tests for COVID-19 within a two-week period. The walk-through inspection, we will coordinate it with representative of the business, whether it's owner, manager, or COVID-19 coordinator. And we'll focus on the ongoing implementation of enhanced cleaning and disinfection procedures and enforcing compliance with the basic safety measure trio of facial covering, social distancing, and frequent hand washing. And we're going to place a priority on working with the staff, because they are the subject matter experts of their own facility, to identify COVID-19 risks that are specific to their facility and facility type, and work with them to maybe identify some optional measures that can be implemented to further reduce the risk of transmission. So some of the black and white issues that we'll look at, we want to make sure they have adequate and clear signage for both their staff and customers regarding staying home if they're feeling ill, wearing facial coverings, practicing proper social distancing, et cetera. We want to make sure all employees are supplied with the adequate PPE they need and are trained in its proper use. And we want to make sure the facility is enforcing that their employees and customers are following these safety measures. Of course, hand washing is a big issue with environmental health and the food facilities and markets and such that we inspect on a regular basis. We want to see hand sanitizer and wipes available for customer use as well. We're going to ensure that they have the documentation onsite that they should, including their self-certification packet and any site-specific measures that they're implementing. We want to really confirm that their procedures for cleaning and disinfection are identified, they're documented, they've identified the high-contact surfaces and objects that need to be cleaned more frequently. And we'd like to see a written cleaning schedule that's posted onsite and initialed by staff as they're completing those duties throughout the day, paying particular attention to areas with frequent interaction, like checkout counters. And by having it documented this way, we think there'll be a greater accountability and greater compliance. And then we're going to talk about, during the walk-through, recommendations that we have. And probably the biggest one is we'd like to see businesses have an onsite COVID-19 coordinator anytime that employees or customers are present to ensure that the facial covering and social distancing mitigations are being complied with, that they're managing the flow of traffic throughout the facility, and ensuring that their customer count are building capacity. of traffic throughout the facility, and ensuring that their customer count or building capacity, reduced capacity for COVID-19 is being enforced. This coordinator is someone who the staff would direct questions to, complaints to, and compliance issues, whether it's a staff or customer that's not in compliance. They have a person designated onsite to deal with those issues, to regularly evaluate the workplace, to identify risks and areas needing improvement. And for larger facilities, maybe they should have a COVID-19 task force to be able to assist that coordinator. We want to see, if possible, increased ventilation and air circulation, in particular, an increased percentage of outside air being circulated inside the building. We want to see particular attention paid to employee kitchen and break areas, and offer suggestions like staggering employee breaks is necessary to help facilitate social distancing since people aren't wearing masks when they're eating and drinking. We'd like to see safety briefings conducted with staff throughout the day, to be constantly reminded of what they should be doing. If feasible, we'd like to see more working from home, teleworking if possible, seeing if vulnerable employees can maybe have their duties changed to minimize contact with others, employ flexible work hours, move furniture around, modify the workstations to be able to increase social distancing. For customers that are unable to wear masks due to health reasons, they ought to have a procedure to assist those customers, which minimizes contact with employees and other customers. And we'd like to encourage businesses to encourage their staff to get regularly tested for COVID-19. So it's still a work in progress, but our goal is to work with facilities to identify site-specific and different things that they can do to improve the work they're already doing and the implementation of the standard measures that we're pretty much all familiar with by now to help minimize the risk and spread of COVID-19. So it is a work in progress, and we're happy to take any suggestions you might have.
Okay, thank you very much for that report. We're going to go on now to Sheriff Kendall.
Good morning, thank you, Chair Hashack, members of the board. Over the past roughly 18 days since July 16th, excuse me, to August 3rd, we've had the standard COVID patrols going. We've had 65 contacts documented during the COVID patrols. The patrols were based on people who are focused on that task. That doesn't count contacts which were made on other calls for service, such as search warrants, investigations of other crimes, and things like that. We issued a second citation in the town of Mendocino yesterday for a young man who didn't want to comply. Currently, we're continuing to devote personnel to the enforcement detail, however, with the incredible rise in violence and highly dangerous calls that we've been experiencing, we've had fewer and fewer people put on those. We're going to continue the patrols, especially in the coastal area, as long as we have the personnel to do so. But as always, the calls for service will dictate how these personnel are dispersed based on the needs at the moment. Anyway, we still have one of our bailiff personnel who's assigned to it, and we will continue that as long as we have him available. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And John Martier?
Good morning, Chair Hashack and members of the board. This is John Martier, Chief Investigator with the Special Investigations Unit. Since two weekends ago, we've staffed our five investigators, working them seven days a week to provide response and coverage for COVID calls for service and complaints. Since July 17th, the Special Investigations Unit has received 31 calls for service. Those were distributed as follows. 10 of those calls were referred to county code enforcement. Six of those calls were referred to Willett's Police Department. Three were referred to the City of Ukiah Code Enforcement, and two were referred to the Fort Bragg Police Department. Most of our calls are concerned with people not using masks or not social distancing in stores. This last weekend, my investigators made an effort to contact businesses throughout the town of Mendocino, distributing some new flyers indicating masks are required, and there's a $100 fine for the first offense. And I'm happy to report that the majority of people that my investigators observed through the weekend, 98%, were wearing masks. We don't seem to have a problem with the tourists visiting our fine county. We are starting to get some pushback from residents who are just tired of the whole COVID-related issues. So we didn't have an opportunity to cite anybody. We were able to educate people and convince people that they need to follow the public health order, and we contacted a couple people that had medical health waivers and were exempt from that. The balance of the other calls were concerning a mall in Fort Bragg that was still open for business, a restaurant in Fort Bragg that was purportedly letting people dine inside, which was found to be not the case, that was an unfounded call, and hotels not cleaning between clients. And those were all reserved through contact with our code enforcement or SIU investigators, and all of those had a positive outcome or were unfounded. We still receive calls about masking. We still respond to that area, but by the time we get over to that location, a lot of times, the people have moved on. So it's kind of, the report is a shot in time. By the time we get out there, the people have walked away or have left. But I'm pleased to report that in the majority of the areas that we've checked, the city of Fort Bragg, Westport, county of Mendocino, many, many, many people, the majority of people are complying with all the orders that we've issued. So been very happy with that, and we continue to work diligently in responding to calls and doing our proactive patrolling on the weekend to assist not only the sheriff's office, but all the other agencies within the county. Weekly, I've been meeting with the other chiefs of police and the other municipalities to ensure that we're giving a unified enforcement message throughout the county. And I am happy to report that I believe all the police departments and code enforcement from the municipalities, as well as the county agencies, are all on the same page. We are providing a uniform message and a uniform front, and I believe that goes a long way in helping enforce the public health orders. I'm also happy with the efforts from our service organizations, the Chamber of Commerce, the Mask Up Mendocino measure, and I think all of that is working very hard and diligently to make sure that our citizens and our visitors are being as safe as they can be. With that, I turn that back over to Chair Hashack. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And then we have John Burks from Code Enforcement.
Hello, Chair, members of the board, CEO and community. This is John Burks, Acting Code Enforcement Supervisor. We're up 5% on our total health order complaints. Chief Martier kind of discussed how those are routed to us, so we don't deal with any specific facial covering complaints. But we do have a total of 108 in-depth investigation cases that we carried out. We have seven active, 101 were closed with compliance. Of those active cases, we have one coastal business, three inland businesses, two coastal vacation home rentals, and then we have one in citation, and that's our activity as of the moment. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to go to, let's see, board comment, but before we do that, if you have a public comment, please call in now. And with the board comment, since we're trying to do this as efficiently with the time as possible because we have a very busy day, we'll go around and we'll limit it to like two questions per supervisor, and we'll go around like that. And then if we have more time, we can do another round, and we hope to get everyone, have their questions filled because we want to get this done by 10:30. So anyway, we'll start with Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, but I want to clarify, even though we're not on the state watch list as yet, our latest health order mirrors the state watch list order, correct?
Chair Hashack, this is CEO Angelo. Yes, the main difference is, well, actually, I should really let our chief counsel Curtis speak to this, but my understanding, the main difference is if you're on the watch list, you really have to apply for a waiver regarding the schools. And so our schools do not have to do that, and please, I would like to refer this to Chief Counsel Curtis if he would like to comment. Thank you.
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So CEO Angelo hit the nail right on the head there. So the requirements that were imposed were the same on the businesses that were announced right about the time that we were looking at becoming on the watch list. So those restrictions are mirroring the state. The only thing is that as to the schools or as to other future restrictions, the state might be imposing on watch list counties. Those are not things that would be happening automatically at this stage.
Thank you very much. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Brown. Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will start with a question for Sheriff Kendall, just for clarification. I believe you referred to patrols for health order enforcement or continuing in Covelo. I wonder, did you actually mean Mendocino?
I believe you're correct, Supervisor McCowen. I'm sorry about that. I meant Mendocino, but Covelo seems to be on my mind this morning.
Well, thank you. I know you have a lot going on in Covelo, obviously, but I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page there. So thank you. Question for Environmental Health Director Strickland. And thank you for all the work that you're doing and for your report on all the work that's being done. But I had one question regarding what people are starting to call hygiene theater. So there's been a tremendous amount of attention focused on sanitation, and every surface that can be scrubbed is being scrubbed from here to the other side of the earth. And yet, the documentation increasingly seems to suggest very few cases, if any, coming from touching surfaces, and the primary means of transmission being airborne droplets, either droplets or if they're smaller aerosolized. But so ventilation seems to be much more important, and I appreciate your focus on looking at ventilation for businesses that are open, operating indoors. Do you have any comments, or what's your experience on the sanitation of services? And are we overdoing it there, and perhaps some of those efforts could be better spent elsewhere, such as improving ventilation?
Thank you, through the chair. This is Trey Strickland, Environmental Health. Yeah, John, you're absolutely right. You know, our focus is going to be just making sure that they're doing everything, that they're following the due diligence and hitting on every aspect of the different safety measures. So there's certain things like door handles, doorknobs, certain fixtures and objects in different buildings, certainly the cash register areas where there's a lot of touching going on. So yeah, the enhanced cleaning is just one aspect of the whole ball of wax that they're supposed to be doing. You know, we definitely are going to encourage whatever works for a particular facility. Ventilation, air circulation is definitely a big deal. Enforcement with their staff and customers of the social distancing and facial coverings. We want them to address everything. And you know, and I want to think outside the box, too, but yeah, we're not going to overly focus on cleaning and disinfection. We just want to make sure that they're doing it at an appropriate frequency so that we can feel like we're ruling that out as a potential source of spread. Thank you.
All right, and I had a question for John Martier of Special Investigations Unit. Is that we had the discussion the other week about the weekend coverage and everything, and that your five people, I believe, in the investigation unit were, you know, were going to be able to cover those hours during the weekend. But the question is, what about the normal job that you guys do in the Special Investigation Unit? And are you able to do that at this point, or is that just not being covered?
Thank you, Chair Hashack, for that question. John Martier, again, from the Special Investigation Unit. Our priority has moved for public health enforcement is our number-one priority now. So to directly answer your question, extending our coverage for seven days has vastly impacted our ability to investigate public assistance fraud. That is our main mission, and I would say we're able to do that during the week about 30% of the time, and the rest of the time, we are responding to calls for service for COVID complaints. And then on the weekend, with the reassignment, we are 100% working on COVID issues. So yes, it has impacted us greatly, and we are not able to do as much of the fraud investigation as we would normally be able to.
Okay, thank you. And then this is for CEO Angelo. Is there an update with Dr. Corin becoming the new Public Health Officer?
Yes, Chair Hashack, thank you for that question. Dr. Corin will be joining us the end of this month, approximately around August 24th. He will be coming on board. Dr. Corin has been talking with some of our community partners, working with some of the staff, and speaking regularly with Dr. Duhann. So he is getting up to speed as to where we are and what our challenges are, and we very much welcome him the end of this month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Jordy?
Yeah, so I have a kind of a question about a couple code enforcement issues that are sort of on the normal docket and are probably slipping a little farther behind because of all the COVID activity. So there's a number of comments have come in to me, and anecdotally, it seems to be true, that it seems like there are maybe more than normal number of RV campers either along the highway or on public highway or on public roads not staying in private campgrounds. And I guess where this ties into COVID is because if someone stays in a private campground, they're staying with a Mendocino County business that has a safety plan, a protocol plan, and sort of a welcoming plan to make sure that people are aware that they need to mask up when they're in public, et cetera. I was talking to someone, I think it was yesterday, who said there were four campers spending the night last night, Sunday night, in the town of Mendocino, as an example. And so I'm just wondering, where is that kind of enforcement? I realize that's probably not the highest priority, but it's probably something that needs to be maintained. And then the other kind of related to that is the abandoned vehicles that we see along some of the roads. On Highway 20, just east of Fort Bragg, maybe five miles, there's a spot where people seem to leave abandoned vehicles routinely, and the one that's been there now has been there for two or three months. I'm not sure if this is a highway patrol responsibility because it's adjacent to a state highway, it's on private land, but it was obviously abandoned by someone else, not the property owner. So they're just sort of nuisance issues like that, that I realize you're stretched really thin, but I'm just curious how we're able to, you know, stay on top of those routine issues. Thank you.
Thank you through the chair. This is John Burks, Acting Code Enforcement Supervisor. So with the RVs, it's a bit challenging because our primary source of communication is with property owners. So when those RVs are parked on somebody's private property for a certain amount of time and that are occupied, that's usually when we would be able to get involved. But if they're on, you know, county roads, public right of ways, it gets more challenging for us to enforce. We really don't have a mechanism for that as we primarily deal with property owners. As far as the abandoned vehicles go, needless to say, you know, most of our efforts, of course, are dedicated to the health order at the moment. We are staying on top of it. We do get them logged again. A lot of those are situational. It depends on where they're located in terms of if the abandoned vehicle abatement applies, or if we need to work with the property owner to try and get those removed. So each one's a little circumstantial, but if you'd like, I'll gladly check into any of those concerns and report back.
All right, thank you.
And Supervisor Williams.
Well, I have some concern over the state not reflecting our current data. And it looks to me like, week after week, we're told we should be on the watch list. We've hit the threshold, but the data hasn't been entered yet. To me, this looks like a three-digit number that needs to be typed on a computer into a spreadsheet somewhere at the state. And I'm struggling because we've been telling the public, the state's been telling the public that we are making data-driven decisions. And yet, our data is weeks old. We're not making data-driven decisions if we're making decisions based on data from three or four weeks ago. And I think there's a continuation of this pattern. The state is requiring that hair salons shut down, they can operate outside, they can't operate inside. Where is the data to show that hair salons in this county are creating cases? What I've seen is people in tight social gatherings, likely in houses, backyards, are causing spread. And as a result, we're shutting down the hair salon. We're telling them they can operate outside. A lot of salons can't operate outside. They're in locations where out on a sidewalk is windy, there's traffic, they would create more of a nuisance. And so we're putting people's livelihoods at risk. Why? Where's the data to show that we're keeping our cases low as a result? And I think we need to convey this to the state. I understand it's not our decision, it's not our local health officer. But we should make it clear to the state, we have an expectation that where we have problems, we will address the problems. But don't allow social gatherings in one part of the county to shut down business in another part of the county. There has to be some rational basis. And I guess I would appreciate hearing from staff and my colleagues on this. Is it appropriate to give the state a little bit more input about where we think the problem areas are in our county and what scaling back should look like?
If I may through the chair, I understand clearly what you're stating Supervisor Williams. I do know that our health officer, Dr. Duhon, has had multiple conversations with the state around the specific needs of Mendocino County, specifically around when they first came out and around the social bubbles and the social gatherings and support groups that we needed. And that she has been able to have multiple conversations with them around the differences in rural communities and what we need versus a more populated area and what we see as the community spread. She's had multiple conversations regarding the gatherings with them, with the state, and with both public health at the state level, as well as other entities that are looking at the coronavirus and the response within the governor's office. As to specific businesses, I can't speak to the governor's decisions on those businesses. I would agree with your statement that we have not seen spread from hair salons in Mendocino County. However, I know that the health officer is also working to be proactive in her efforts to be able to, if Mendocino County is placed on the watch list, to be able to show that we are being proactive in effort to collaborate and be able to resolve situations as quickly as possible, to be able to minimize the impacts for Mendocino County, and hopefully be able to resolve situations and reduce our numbers to be able to get off watch lists as quickly as possible as well. Currently, we are not on the watch list, you are correct, and it is certainly challenging to not have accurate data reflected at the state level of Mendocino County. And that's part of the reason we are having regular meetings. And when I say regular, it's really and truly, we're having daily meetings, if not sometimes twice a day. Sometimes if they skip on the weekends, then we're having several other meetings to collaborate and make sure that we have all of the right partners on those meetings to try and rectify the situation.
And perhaps, or last question, perhaps I could hear from my colleagues. I think our staff is doing everything right, but I feel like we're performing surgery on the wrong patient. And I have this, wait a second, let's look at where the problem is and try to address the problem rather than being punitive to businesses that have nothing to do with the problem. Is it appropriate for us to mirror our public health officer's outreach with her counterparts at a political level? Should the county be drafting a letter explaining where we have, where our weaknesses are, where we see spread, and what we think the appropriate scaling back would be?
Well, I would say I'm in agreement with you Supervisor Williams. I could see that it's certainly disconcerting to know that the state doesn't have the correct information or can't look at our webpage and see what we're seeing and make their decisions based on that. So to think that they're a couple of weeks behind makes you wonder, where are they a couple of weeks behind for the rest of the state too? And I would certainly welcome a letter like that saying, you know, why are we, you know, under these restrictions when you guys can't even get your act together? And what's the, where is the basis for all this? What's the data, as you say?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, sir. I can also support a letter, but I'd like to ask Ms. Emery, on these daily calls and daily meetings with the state, who's on those calls? Is it California Department of Public Health or Cal OES, Governor's Office? Who are you talking to at a state level?
I may through the chair. It is primarily California Department of Public Health because they are the ones who are collecting that data. One of the biggest challenges that we're finding is some of the labs are not reporting their information into the state Cal Ready system. And so we are working through those processes to get that information uploaded to them so that they have most accurate information.
So there are the statewide calls. They're now two days a week that county supervisors, cities, assembly, senate, you know, statewide, and everyone can go on. Are we having individuals go on and be able to ask directly of CDPH, Dr. Ho, I can't think of her name, Kathy, anyway, escapes me right now. But those are questions that you can ask, and it's statewide, everybody's listening and receiving the same response. So I think if we want to advocate, this may be, take some of the language from the letter and be on those calls and ask those questions.
I would ask that if staff works on a letter, that we also ask for some feedback from the state for best practices. For example, is there concern about indoor hair salons, for example, having to do with maybe lack of consistent air circulation? So if fresh air circulation in an indoor environment is highly important for reducing the particles in the air that the customer would breathe, then I think we want to ask for, well, what would the standard be for the cubic feet per minute of air circulation, change out of air be? So that businesses would know, okay, they need to open their windows, they need to have fans blowing, you know, what is it that the state's concerned about, about these indoor environments? And how would the state recommend to mitigate that? Because I don't think any of us on this, in this meeting are personally experts on what would be the safe threshold. And I think we need to push them to provide the best available science.
Okay, I'm going to go to CEO Angelo.
Chair Hashack, thank you. If this board wants a letter drafted to go to the state, that's fine. We will draft the letter and submit any information or any questions that this board would like. Dr. Duhon has been in very close communication with Dr. Sonia Angel, Supervisor Brown. That's the name I believe you were looking for. And so I do know that they spoke even as late as last evening. What I would like this board to consider, though, is Mendocino County is not the only county that is challenged with the state data not mirroring the local data. There are 58 counties, 38 counties on the watch list, there are 20 counties that are not. You know, there was a time, and certainly we were told this, that if you were on the watch list, you got additional assistance from the state. I believe at this point in time, because there are so many counties on the watch list, that may or may not be accurate. I do know Mendocino County is not the only county that has data that doesn't mirror the state. So this is truly a state problem. Now, when you get here locally to what is in the orders that Dr. Duhon has written, and those orders mirroring orders that a county that's on the watch list would have, I think that if you think back, Dr. Duhon did that, one, thinking that, knowing that our data matched the metrics for the watch list and wanting to move forward so that we would be ahead of the curve, so to speak. What she did do, though, is she put us in a position that we have local control. So I share that with this board to remember that there is local control here. If you are on the watch list at this point in time, there is a good possibility that you will not get off of that watch list for quite some time. The fact that we are not because of some state problems with data collection actually benefits us. From what I'm hearing from this board, the issue really is what's in the order, whether we're on the watch list or not, what's in the order, what businesses are closed, what businesses have to work outside rather than inside. I think those are all questions that we could pose to the state, but I would like to remind this board that we probably need to have further discussion with Dr. Duhon and this board, because at this point, we do have local control because we're not on the watch list. And that was specifically what Dr. Duhon wanted. And remember, what she said was because we had orders that matched being on the watch list, that we could change those orders before the state would change our orders because we're not on the watch list. So, you know, I hope I'm making myself clear, but the point is that we have local control. This board and Dr. Duhon could have a discussion about the orders, and if there's any changes that everyone agreed to, we could do it because we have local control. And it's unfortunate about the data, and again, we're not the only county that doesn't have the same data as the state has on that county. Remember, it could take a week to two weeks to get results for the lab tests, and then you add that data going to the state. So I don't think when this started that anybody realized the magnitude of COVID. If you think about the testing, the lack of testing, how difficult it is, or the length of time to get a test result back, and you think of 85 sites throughout the state doing all this testing with OptumServe, it really is not surprising that there's challenges with collecting the data and getting the data. Unfortunately, it impacts lives. So again, we will submit any letter with anything that this board wants in the letter, but I think, you know, a little bit of a paradigm shift here is that we do have local control. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Christian Curtis, County Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to add a little bit to what CEO Angelo was saying, I want to let the board know that my understanding at the moment is that the state has been taking the position that if you are on the watch list and then your numbers go down, such that you're able to stay off of the watch list for a period of 14 days, at that point, you still do not have a loosening of your restrictions from the state. At that point, they consider it to have been, they consider the reason the numbers are down to be the restrictions that the state put in place, and therefore, what was indicated to me, at least on a call yesterday, was that at that point, if you come off of the watch list, you're still subject to all the restrictions you were subject to before. You simply might not be subject to any additional restrictions that are put on watch list counties. So I do want the board to be aware of that and just aware, in terms of what CEO Angelo was saying, as to local control, staying off the watch list has benefited us on that front in that if the rate of growth stabilizes, there's ability to loosen up at the local level. I also just want the board to be aware, I don't know that I can speak with a perfect understanding of the state's rationale, but it sounds to me like one of the concerns that the board is expressing has to do with the grouping, essentially, of what businesses close indoor operations when. And, you know, the latest grouping for watch list counties included things like the hair salons, the nail salons, having to move outside. It also included gyms and places of worship. And I just want the board to be aware, my understanding of where the state has been coming from on this is that it's not necessarily where the transmission happens to be happening in a particular county, it's that they tend to group the industries by risk rather than where we know that the cases are occurring, because the idea is to be preventing future spread, not just containing outbreaks, which is really more, you know, the product of the contact tracing, et cetera. So I just want the board to be aware, the state might not find it particularly persuasive that we haven't had, say, a significant number of cases, you know, related to a hair salon or a nail salon, you know, where we have had significant cases connected to other things that happened to be in that grouping, you know, primarily places of worship. So they're looking at sort of limiting rate of spread, and in doing so, they look more at the risk. So in terms of any letter that got crafted, I just want the board to be aware of that, and that it may be good to sort of speak to it through that lens in speaking to the board. Simply looking at where the cases have been so far in the county may not be particularly persuasive to the state. Thank you.
Supervisor Williams.
Yeah, I agree with just about everything said. My issue is, I believe the state is wrong. And it's a reductionist mindset to say, to rate these
And it's a reductionist mindset to say, to rate these industries and say, well, because hair salons in Los Angeles are a high risk, let's shut them down in Mendocino. I'm looking at my neighbors who see, we may be averaging above 15 cases a day. We have to get down below six. It could be a very long time. We could be into next year. And, you know, they have a hair salon with one employee and one customer at a time and windows open, ventilation, N95 masks, doing everything imaginable and no spread in our county. And I can't imagine any spread. And yet, we're telling them they don't have the right to work. I think we do have a problem. Our curve does look dangerous. We need to address it. But we need to ask the state to work with us to take steps to address the actual problem, not let the problem continue and at the same time penalize businesses that have nothing to do with the spread. If, in fact, these are high-risk businesses, we need some data to be able to show the business owners why we're shutting them down. I haven't seen that. I don't see hair salons being the leading cause of spread in Sonoma County, Humboldt County, Lake County, Glenn. So it may be an oversight where 0.2% of the state population were being grouped in in a way that's just not appropriate. And I think we do need to, we have an obligation to look at the human element. One of the health concerns is creating homelessness, shutting down businesses, putting people under who have to feed their kids. We can do it if there's a significant risk, if there's data to show that there's spread. But to do it arbitrarily based on what's happening in urban centers, I think needs to be questioned. And whether we do it independently or we work through an association, maybe R C R C, I think we need to carry that message to the state. We at least need to have a conversation to make sure that we're backing our decisions with data. And frankly, seeing that the state in a three-week period can't enter our total and, you know, pointing at labs not reporting data, well, the data is on our website. We've told the state how many cases we have. Type in the number, right? The upload is somebody hitting three keys on the keyboard. And if that's not happening, it calls into question all of the other decisions that are being made on questionable data. Handing it back to the chair, could we talk about next steps? I don't feel like I need to own this. I'd be happy if another supervisor steps up to write it or if we give our input to staff and staff writes it. But I'd like to understand what next steps could be.
Well, before we go to any kind of direction Supervisor Williams, let's go to public comment, too. And I think Supervisor McCowen.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I have not weighed in yet on this issue.
That's why I called on you.
Oh, well, thank you. I didn't quite hear that. So I agree with virtually everything that everyone has said. We have several separate issues. And certainly on, I think, what Supervisor Williams raised initially, the one-size-fits-all approach of the state. And that's certainly something that I've been discussing for over three months, maybe four. It doesn't make any sense. And I hear what County Counsel says about the perceived risk factors of hair salons and they're grouped in with these other perceived high-risk businesses. But it doesn't make any sense to be shutting down a sole proprietor hair salon when what's driving our cases are gatherings. So I think we should have a letter that advocates, again, for local control to allow the health officer to make reasonable decisions based on actual data. So we might ask the state, what is their data that supports closing down hair salons? And I can imagine in Los Angeles, you have some hair salons, they have dozens of workstations, dozens of stylists, dozens of customers. That's not our situation. Many of them, it's a one- or two-chair operation. So the issue of one-size-fits-all, I think also the data issue relates to this question. But the data issue regarding what qualifies you for the watch list. So it's true, the state is probably a minimum of two weeks, maybe a month behind on calculating their data as to whether we would be on the watch list or not. But we are also behind in our data. And it gets complicated because my understanding is the state is looking at a 14-day period with a seven-day lag. So the data they're looking at, count back seven days from today and then count back 14 days, it's that 14 days that they're looking at. But they're not looking at what was reported on those days. They're supposedly looking at the earliest date that someone could have been infected. So the day that someone was tested and then later confirmed positive is what they're going off of. But when we have here locally, as we do, a 14-day or greater lag in getting test results, that pushes us beyond their seven-day lag. So if the state was able to catch up and use current data, it would be incomplete. So there's multiple problems with the data. And I don't know how you condense that into a letter that would be comprehensible. But the state has really helped create this problem with the way they're viewing the data. One thing I want to bring to the board's attention, I'm aware that the city of Ucaya has reached out to CEO Angelo and they have offered to assist with quite a number of things, including the state data. They're willing to do data analysis of our cases to help clarify what data the state should be using, what timeframes does it fit into. They would like to do, you could call it heat clusters of where are new cases concentrated to show it graphically on a map, perhaps could influence the state. Gee, if 90% of your cases are all inland and it's really, and we've documented it's related to gatherings, why are we shutting down a hairstylist in Albion? All, let's see. Well, so a question that I would have there is, I believe we've accepted the city's offer to help with data analysis, cluster mapping. Are we making progress in those areas? Have we actually begun to implement utilizing that assistance?
Well, I guess that's a question for CEO Angelo.
Chair Hashjack, yes. Tammy Bartlamay and Becky Emery have connected. And I know that we have accepted their offer. We're actually very appreciative of the city assisting us. And I don't know if Ms. Emery has anything further to add.
Chair Hashjack, in addition to meeting with Tammy Bartlamay, we are working through geomapping to be able to identify areas and clusters. We're also working on data analysis together. And Ms. Bartlamay has been a tremendous asset in working forward or working through those efforts. And so we greatly appreciated the city's partnership and are continuing to try and identify those hotspots and areas as well.
Thank you. All right, going back to Supervisor Williams. Oh, why don't, if we're all right right now, why don't we go to public comment?
Mr. Chair, that's fine. I will note, I have some additional questions, but we can certainly come back to them after public comment.
Okay. So, let's see, Deputy Clerk of the Board, is David Gurney on the line?
This is Atlas Pearson, Deputy Clerk of the Board. And no, he is not.
Okay. Okay, that was the only call-in we had on this. So we'll go and Supervisor McCowen.
Well, I think in rotation Supervisor Brown might have been first.
Right. And since we're, let's go to one question each on this round, if possible, because we're trying to cut this. So anyway, Supervisor Brown.
I'll pass.
Okay, Supervisor McCowen.
Could we have an update on the outreach to the Hispanic, Latinx, Latino community?
Becky Emery, do you have a response to that? Or CEO Angelo?
Yeah, Chair Hashjack, we are, I think we talked about this. I know that we have our contract with North Coast Opportunities and we have asked them to focus on the Latinx population and also the youth. And they are beginning that process. So I appreciate the question. I wanted to actually get back to this when we talked about enforcement, that we do see this as public health prevention efforts with NCO that has already made inroads into the Latinx population, doing the mask-up Mendo campaign and outreach and education. So that's the first thing. Secondly, we now have one and soon two contracts with Spanish translators. So if you may or may not notice, but when we put out a press release, it takes a little longer because we do Spanish translation. So we are attempting to translate all of the documents that we put out in English into Spanish. We have folk, we are paying for focused outreach. And I don't know if Ms. Emery has anything else to add. I know that we have our tracers that we are looking at additional Spanish-speaking contact tracers. That would be my update on that. And again, I would go to Ms. Emery if she has anything else to add.
I'm through the chair. CEO Angelo absolutely hit the points that I was going to bring forward as far as our increased translation for timely documents. And also, we are training those contact tracers through the Disaster Healthcare Volunteer Network that are bilingual. We received a couple of supports from the state, not as many as we had requested as far as bilingual staff. But we have our staff working with the individuals that are bilingual to be able to increase those supports, and that is moving forward.
Just a quick follow-up, if I may. So are we then reaching out to the Latinx organizations that presented to the board on the 21st?
Yes.
Are we working directly with them?
Two. I don't, Becky Emery, have you been in contact also?
I know that we are working and continuing those partnerships as we are going to be moving forward throughout the event and implementing additional strategies.
Okay. Thank you. All right, just since we're trying to end this topic at 10:30, my question would be on the skilled nursing facilities. And Ms. Emery, are we, how are we doing with the skilled nursing facilities right now?
Chair Hashjack, we are continuing to partner with our skilled nursing facilities. They are continuing to do diligent efforts to ensure the safety and well-being of their residents. They have partnered with the hospital on that effort and as well as having regular calls with our health officer, several of the leads within the various hospitals and the facility itself to come with the best solutions possible to address the situation within the facility and to continue a continuity of care and support to their residents. And really and truly, the MOOC has been a fantastic partner in gaining state support. We had a week of strike team from five people supporting that facility and providing staffing as well. And we continue to work together to be able to address the situation as it evolves.
Well, thank you. And that certainly, it's a concern for the whole community about what's happening in those skilled nursing facilities. So thank you for that work. Supervisor Jardy.
Yeah, and we certainly do appreciate the role of the hospitals with Sherwood Oaks, taking some patients out of the Sherwood Oaks and into the hospital. The coast clinics, and I believe the clinics really throughout the whole county serve, I believe, a majority of all residents in the county. I think I've heard that the coast clinics serve something like 55% of everyone who lives on the coast at least one time during the year. So they really do have a good ability to communicate with the general public. And so in terms of outreach in the public in general, but also to Latinx community, I guess I'm kind of hoping that the clinics will have a role in this as well because of just their daily contact they have with so many members of the public. So is it still envisioned that the clinics will be part of this outreach to the Latinx community?
Through the chair. Supervisor Jardy, we are continuing to partner with the clinics in many, many ways, but certainly they have been a key fact, a part for us in outreach to our Latinx community. Specifically, you know, the most recent has been working very closely with the Anderson Valley Health Clinic and partnering with them to ensure that we have good information, that we have contact information, that we're able to connect with individuals that they have become aware of being close contacts of positive individuals. So it's been a really good partnership. It's certainly enhancing and it's continuing to grow. I have to say, I really and truly appreciate that all of the clinics have come forward in partnering and really want to support the effort and response to Mendocino County and all of its residents.
Okay, and Supervisor Williams?
No further.
Well, Supervisor Williams, do you have any further thoughts on what action we should take as far as the next step?
Yeah, perhaps CEO Angelo could guide us. You know, staff deserves praise. We weren't, this county was not positioned to take on the response to a pandemic. And our staff is working long hours and overwhelmed due to the underlying causes. I don't want to put more burden on staff asking for writing a persuasive piece about why we need more local control and how the state is failing to address our actual problem. But I guess I'd like to hear, is it more work to get the input from the five of us and have to deal with us than just writing the letter? And I would raise my hand, I'd be happy to offer a draft and circulate it to the board, however you see fit.
And I guess my question would be, is this something that Supervisor Brown could bring up in some of the conversations where she is on the call with state O E S?
I would support that. I would like to get a response from the state. I think if we're putting local businesses under without data, at a minimum, the state needs to explain to us what data they're using to make these decisions. You can't just be giving our input and a thanks for your input, have a nice day. I think we deserve a response. Certain generic orders are being imposed upon our county, why? And if we find out that the why is because of data that's inaccurate, let's fix the data that's inaccurate. Not asking for a fight with the state, I'm asking to collaborate with the state for a better outcome.
Chair Hashjack?
Yes.
This is CEO Angelo. My suggestion, of course, is always to be strategic when you're dealing with the state. And certainly Supervisor Brown knows that after her many years in dealing with the state. What I would like to do is arrange for a call with Dr. Duhan and possibly whoever on the board is going to be the representative to assist staff with putting the letter together. I'm assuming it's you, Chair Hashjack. So I think the first thing we should do is meet Dr. Duhan, yourself, and myself, possibly Chief Counsel Curtis as well, and discuss the conversations that have occurred with the state. And then I think we can draft a letter that could be more pointed to what this board wants and how we can really work with the state to get them to understand our position. I think that, you know, I can tell you from when we started many months ago in trying to get assistance from the state with testing, that the state had a lot of difficulty understanding small rural counties and the positions that we're in. So I would like to have more of a collaborative effort here with Dr. Duhan, yourself, Supervisor Hashjack. And we could meet, talk about what the latest is that Dr. Duhan has with her many conversations with Dr. Angel, and then draft a letter for this board to the state, if that will work for this board. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Are we in agreement?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you. Well, I certainly have no concern about holding that meeting. I think it's a good idea, but I think Supervisor Williams has been the strongest proponent of this letter with the most pointed questions. I would hope that we would include Supervisor Williams in this meeting to collaborate on what points should be made in the letter.
Yeah, and that sounds fine with me. County Council?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to add on a little bit to what CEO Angelo had said. My observation has been that where we have gotten traction with the state in explaining the needs of rural counties has been where we've really been able to educate them as to the differences between the urban counties and rural counties and really be able to point to some of the specific differences in the way the businesses operate here or that, you know, people's lives here are different from in a more urban setting. And I will say, as Ms. Emery had said previously, I think Dr. Duen has actually had a remarkable level of success on that front, as challenging as it may have been. So one area that may be helpful for any letter is to the degree there can be either input from the industry or, or input from the supervisors as to specific differences in what, what these businesses look like in a rural setting and how that relates to the safety concerns and the risks that the state is looking at. I think, I think that will likely make a significant difference in the persuasive value of any letter that's crafted. Thank you.
Chair Hashjack, this is CEO Angelo again. I, I don't know who will be assigned, if it's you, if it's Supervisor Williams, if it's two of you, it, it doesn't matter. That would be fine. I, what I would, what I would ask though, is that this board be very, very clear what you want as an outcome, so that we can draft the letter specifically focused on the outcome that we want. Thank you.
Chair Hashjack?
Yes, Supervisor Williams?
So that we can represent the board as a whole. I, I think what we want is either local control to allow our health officer to set restrictions based on actual risk and actual cases, or we would like the state to set, to do the same, set restrictions in our county based on where we have actual cases or we have documented and justified risk. And I think we're probably not alone. I imagine there are other counties that are seeing this one size doesn't fit all. And maybe this is a way to kick off a discussion between the counties and the state. And I think it may be valuable to pull RCRC into the process. We don't want this to be a fight. We want it to be about collaborating, collaborating with the state to make data driven decisions. Our argument is the decisions are not backed by data today.
Chair Hashjack, I'm sorry, it's, it's getting late in the hour here, so I want to just comment, we always want local control. Those two words are embedded in anything we do, whether we're working with the state, CSAC, RCRC, you know, at the federal level, we always want local control. So if this board wants to move forward with a letter focused on local control, I think that would be optimal. Additionally, I will say, as this board knows, I do a lot of work at the state level because of the association I'm in. And RCRC is not that intimately involved at this point, it is, it is CSAC. CSAC is, is absolutely at the table with the state on all of this. And so CSAC would be the organization we would work with. RCRC, we would certainly notify them, but it would be CSAC. So I, I would make the recommendation to this board that we focus on local control rather than anything else. And if we're going to work with the statewide association, that it would be CSAC first. Thank you.
I can support that.
I guess my question would be, if we're not on the watch list and we have local, why would we, we need to write a letter to the state demanding local control? We want greater control over some of the businesses. I think that would have to be something that we would work with RCRC and similar counties because we would all have the same situation like County Council said.
Chair Hashjack, as I see it, today we have local control because we're doing what the state would demand for us to do. But if we make any changes, the state will take away our local control. So it's only local control in theory. We have it until we exercise it and then we lose it. Well, that's not the right predicament to put rural counties in.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, so let's wrap this up. Supervisor Williams, tell us what you think is happening at this point.
I think you are taking responsibility for authoring a letter, taking the burden off staff, allowing me to contribute some points to it. And are we bringing it back to the board next meeting or are we submitting it? Do we have support from our colleagues to trust our judgment and submit the letter?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Supervisor McCowen?
I support directing that or authorizing you, Chair Hashjack, and Supervisor Williams to work with staff to draft a letter and also to authorize you sending it, subject to it's what the two of you as our board representatives agree to. But maybe it's more than one letter. So I think this issue of requesting local control for the health officer to make decisions based on local data and her professional judgment, knowledge, et cetera, that's really a key topic by itself, I think. So we would want local control for the health officer to use our local experience in consultation with the state. That's fine. But let's have our health officer have the ability to say it doesn't make sense to shut down the hair salon because somebody had a party in Calpella. Another letter could deal with the data issues related to the watch list. So there's a distinct lack of clarity around what data is available, what data is the state currently tracking. One issue, and I believe County Counsel mentioned that his understanding was that even after your numbers go down for a 14 day period, again, I believe with a seven day lag, you wouldn't necessarily come off the state monitoring list. I believe that I read in the information from the state on the state monitoring list that after your data showed that your case rate had dropped below 100 per 100,000 for 14 days, that you would come off of the state monitoring list. So we need clarity on that, exactly what criteria are being used. I think we need to know also, how does the state calculate that we're supposed to be on the watch list when there's a, they're using us, they say they're using a seven day lag, and yet we have a 14 day lag in getting test results? I think these are related in a way, but distinctly different enough that maybe we should have two letters, or if we only have one, I would focus on the local control for the health officer issue.
I think what we need to do is, is Supervisor Williams and I need to sit down with the CEO, with the public health officer, see where we are with these communications and see what we can do as far as this discussion we've had today.
One more, one more thought?
Supervisor Williams, what was that?
Second.
Okay, because we need to get moving on this.
Well, this is a key thought. So we're qualifying for the watch list based on the 14 day case rate. Other factors that don't yet apply to us because we haven't had enough hospitalizations, but it would be ICU beds, current percentage of ICU beds currently available, percentage of ventilators currently available. I would hope we would also take a sentence or two to make the point that in Mendocino County, although we have the elevated case rate based on the 14 day rate, we have not come close to hitting thresholds for availability of ICU beds or ventilators. So although we've had increased case rate, it has not even begun to overwhelm our healthcare system. I think that's a very important point to make in asking for local control and all factors to be considered. Thank you.
Okay, so are we in agreement basically with Supervisor Williams and myself, working with county staff to, to craft this letter? Supervisor Brown?
I support that.
Okay, Supervisor McCowen?
I do, and I do have one more point to make before we leave the topic.
Moving though, okay.
Well, Mr. Chair, people want to know what's going on.
What?
Well, we, we have heard that employees at three senior facilities tested positive. I would like to have an update on what's been the follow up from that. Have there been any more positive tests at those three facilities, either among staff or employees?
Okay, and we will go, we'll finish off this with Supervisor Jordy. Are you all right with this process for the letter?
Yeah, it sounds like an excellent suggestion. Thanks.
Okay, and we'll answer Supervisor McCowen's request from Becky Emery? Ms. Emery?
In follow up, thank you, Chair Hashjack. We have done testing at the other facilities and are awaiting those results at this time. I have not had additional reports of positives, but as I said, we are awaiting results.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we are going to take a break until 11:02, right? Which is discussion and possible action, including direction to staff regarding the potential redirection of the cannabis cultivation permitting program to a land use ordinance and direction to staff regarding prioritizing Phase One and Two existing permit holders who require a sequet checklist with a cost recovery system identified in response to board direction received on June 16th, 2020. The sponsor is Planning and Building Services. Okay, so is, is Director Brent Schultz on the line?
Yes, I'm here, Chair Hashjack. Good morning, everybody, and board members, CEO Angelo and County Counsel Curtis. Brent Schultz, Planning Building Services Director. I can proceed ahead if you'd like me to with my presentation, Chair Hashjack.
Yes, go ahead.
Over the last year, our PBS cannabis team have worked hard to streamline the current permit process, which in my estimation, I've said it before, it's the most complex ordinance for applicants to navigate and our county staff to process. Our hope has always been that our applicants can obtain all required county and state approvals to obtain a license. As we know, most of our primary cultivators only have provisional licenses at the state, which expire on January 1st, 2022. And if, if our cannabis cultivated permities and applicants did not obtain approvals as necessary through our state agencies and our process and mitigate things to a less than significant levels, they will not obtain an annual state license. And without the license and state permit, you can't cultivate in our county. The original iteration of the Mendocino County Cannabis Cultivation Ordinance became operable in May 4th, 2017, and the ordinance has been continually modified and changed over time. The cannabis program started in Ag Department with 700 to 800 applications submitted over a three month period. The vast majority of our applicants in 2017, 18, 19, or about 62% over 800 are still in review and not getting county permits. Many of these applicants under review are, are the difficulties of their review are because of the high volume of work, constant management and staffing changes, code changes, and the quality of applications insufficient to move applications forward in an efficient manner. The cannabis program has moved to the Planning and Building Services Department in May 2019, just over a year ago. A few months after the move, after situating people and beginning to dive into the program, we, and also the purpose of the move, the board set up an agom objective to develop efficiency in permitting, reduce barriers to permit issuance, and deal with the fiscal deficit. And then just less than a year ago, we did do a deep dive into the 1100 applications, and that's when we discovered a number of problems with our criminal history background check process, census species reviews, air quality clearances, site specific SEQA, and they were significant barriers to moving our applicants forward. PBS was able to streamline criminal history checks with the help of the DA, Ister, and Sheriff, our air quality review process with Barber, we've, we've cleaned up, tax appeal process and permit renewal process, to the extent feasible with the limitations of our minister ordinance. The weakness with our minister ordinance is that applicants must meet all the requirements of the ordinance before being issued a county cultivation permit. So it's really a pass fail. A land use discretionary permitting process eliminates the pass fail and allows for conditioning of land use permits for commercial cultivation development so that all environmental requirements are met as a condition of issuance of a land use permit. This would also satisfy CDFAs requirement for site specific SEQA clearance and allow for state regulatory agencies to weigh in and offer suggested special conditions to be issued for, for the land use permits. Despite our best efforts of staff to streamline the program and assist the board and stakeholders with changes to the current ordinance and develop new CDFA, CDFW processes, the PBS cannabis program is in a difficult spot as the lead agency to handle both these new state agency processes with no guarantee of success. Our current permities and active applicants also are in a tough spot and have a tough road ahead to provide sufficient information to complete the SEQA checklist and pilot program, even with, with these forms filled out perfectly with, and by the, by the way, they have to, in some cases, do complete project script or detailed project descriptions and biological reports, and the biological reports, which may not be completed until the next spring's blooming season. Our permities to applicants have no guaranteed success or state license either. While the current minister ordinance may be able to allow some to get through this process that we currently have, that have no significant environmental issues or properties, the current ordinance and permit process will not work for all applications. A discretionary permit process could allow more permities and active applicants to obtain an annual license than the current minister ordinance and permit process. The staff would be able to condition the permit to assist applicants to achieve the required less than significant impact for cultivation environmental impacts. While we all hope the current cannabis ordinance, as we, as we worked on it this last year, could work for everyone who wants to legally cultivate in our county, the fact is it's not working. Applicants and staff are stuck. We're really in a hamster wheel. I've, I've said that before with our applicants in this process. And the state agencies have, are having difficulty granting approvals because you cannot condition a ministerial permit. But you can mitigate environmental impacts from different land uses in California to a less than significant impact with discretionary land use actions and allow operations to gain approvals, permits, licenses, and start operations. With that said, in an effort to create a process that our applicants and staff can ensure greater success in obtaining a state annual license for our cultivators, we recommend the board direct staff to do the following. One, that they combine 10A17 and 2242 into one ordinance under Title 22. Such ordinance should include discretionary use permit process for all future cannabis cultivation applicants. This new ordinance would also include a sunset or transition period of current cannabis cultivation ordinance to transition to a discretionary land use approval process. And it would also include that you would not need a permit from us, just meet your conditions or your use permit and get a state license. That would streamline the process much further. That would streamline the process much further. Include a zoning table, too, approved by the board identifying all locations by zoning district where cannabis may be cultivated, the size of cultivation operations, consistent with state licensing categories, of course, and what discretionary process is required to obtain approval. And that's Appendix D in your packet. And just so you, as a reminder, there's a legacy table and a non-legacy table. The legacy table was prepared by the ad hoc, this table was, was the last one that it had provided to the board some time ago. And legacy is for those who were cultivating prior to 2016 and could show evidence of that. Non-legacy is you don't have any evidence of that. So three, we also would like the board to tell us how to prioritize existing permit holders and active applicants as we process discretionary permit applications. Existing permit holders would be, I'd recommend it be given priority for discretionary licenses, and then active applicants with state provisional licenses currently would go next. And then the fourth one, finally, tell staff how to process the sequo checklist. Option one would be establish a fee and retain consultants to prepare the checklist. Option two, create a process for applicants to prepare the checklist and fee for staff to review process and work with state agencies on. Or option three, have staff prepare the checklist. And I just wanted to let everybody know, on a recent conversation with CDF's staff, they informed our PBS staff team that they must be the lead and prepare the checklist. However, we don't have sufficient staffing currently in our cannabis program, our PBS, to prepare the thousand checklists before the state annual deadline in January 2022. We also, I want to point out that our current cannabis program staffing, we really appreciate Human Resources, they're hustling to help us fill these vacant positions, but we only have three of the eight positions filled right now. And there's only going to be four planners in here. This is, somebody had told me they thought we were having eight planners. We don't have, it's only four planners, a manager to run it, and some admin staff. And we need to work within our, you know, our constraints of our revenues. And our planning staff, if we think we're going to, you know, have them take on more of it, they're down four positions right now in that program. So anyway, to continue on, we need the board to make decisive call on the direction of cannabis cultivation ordinance. The current cultivation ordinance and permit process clearly is not working. It's no silver, it's hard to do a silver bullet to make everything work for a one-size-fits-all permitting in a cannabis cultivation environment in a county with a vast, diverse, beautiful, and environmentally sensitive topography and geography. While our proposal is also no silver bullet, it is a known process throughout the state would give clear pathways to helping our applicants demonstrate less than significant environmental impacts through conditioned discretionary actions. It also gives property owners adjacent to the proposed cannabis cultivation sites a voice when discretionary uses go forward to the public meetings. PBS cannabis team proposed redirection, or I call it cannabis 2.0, will not lessen county cultivation controls and environmental protections in the current ordinance, but it strengthens them and gives a pathway to a state annual license. So I want to hit that direct. I've read some of the letters where they think this would take away environmental controls by our county or our controls as a county. It does not. It just gives us a pathway to get people's sites that have environmental impacts from the cultivations mitigated to a less than significant level. However, we need the board to give us direction on which restrictions in the current ordinance should remain. I'd also like to, you know, this was, you know, I really hope this isn't a time for pointing fingers at state agencies, county electeds, county staff, or our important stakeholders building a strong cannabis industry in our county. But now's the time for critical decisions to put our cannabis cultivation ordinance on a strong footing for the future and to help those that cultivate get a state annual license and thrive and compete in a very competitive state market. With that, I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you on this. Our whole team is here. Julie is here, Meg and myself, Trent. And I really appreciate their help pulling this all together. It was a lot of work for them, and we're ready to answer any questions you have.
All right, so let's see. Where should we start with questions? Supervisor Williams, were you ready to ask a question on that?
I guess so. So the way I see this is the county made a commitment to cultivators who are transitioning out of prohibition, commitment to all residents about a regulated market with enforcement, a commitment to the environment. This dilemma is all about upholding commitment. It's appropriate to let the code evolve as necessary to align with state policy that we didn't anticipate and address problems that we didn't anticipate. And with the facts before me, I feel that use permits are likely the appropriate model for new cultivation. But the public deserves transparent justification. If we're making a shift, we need to be able to clearly explain that this is a dead-end program. We can't just say it. We need to show the documentation. I don't feel that we're quite at that level today. I don't want to pause the progress. I think we are making progress on addressing a looming deadline in that all legal outdoor cultivation will sunset next year without our action. But the public has heard so many mixed messages about what CDFA and CDFW will allow, where we are in the process, whose fault it is. I think we have an obligation to get it down on paper, documented. And if we can't get the existing cultivators through the ordinance, then we have to make changes. When we make those changes, the goal should be to keep the spirit of all of the environmental protections that went into the original work. It's fine if what's under the hood is a different permitting model, but we can't lose the goals that were agreed upon in that permitting process. I think when, you know, this discussion naturally leads into scaling up, and it's the fear of a lot of folks that switching to use permits will open the door to larger-scale cannabis. I think this board needs to send a message that as we switch to use permits and as the cannabis cultivation market develops and there is pressure to scale up, that that scaling up will not scale up the problems that have been associated with cultivation under our current permitting system. For example, scaling up needs to be plants in the ground, not more plastic on graded hilltops with water being shuttled with fossil fuel. You can't go from what we have today to, with those problems, to four times the size of problems. We need to transition to more of a regenerative farming model, bioplastic, environmentally sound, and focused on the small farms. What we see working is a small farm model. And I think we can get there, but I think we need to continue working with CDFA and CDFW to see if we can get state annual licenses for all of the brave folks who enrolled in the current program. And in parallel, begin developing a use permit model. And once that model is clearly documented, has had public, gone through a public vetting process, all parties agree it offers the same protection as the current ordinance, but less burden for the applicants, less staff time, less costs, more enforceable, then we move to it. But I don't think we want to pull the plug until we have that next step in place, vetted, perfected. And I guess the question, I apologize, leading up to the question. Question I have is there are approximately 800 provisional licenses. These are temporary state licenses. Yet there are only about 275 county permits. Why is there such a discrepancy there?
Trent, this is Brent Schultz, Planning and Building Services Director. Trent, you've worked the most with, do you want to answer that question on why they're doing so many provisionals?
Yeah, Trent Taylor, Plan and Building through the chair. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so the reason I believe that they're getting provisionals is because they're so easy to get, and our ordinance remains as difficult of requirements as it's ever been. So there's no sensitive species review to get a provisional. There's no site-specific sequo to get a provisional. So many applicants have applied, got their provisionals, and they're in this timeframe that that was definitely a stopgap to annual licenses. Then they still have to finish all the annual license requirements, some of which are heavily dependent on what we're doing in our program, under our ordinance, to get the site-specific sequo and the sensitive species review, as well as the other clearances that our county requires that are somewhat more restrictive than the state. I hope that answers the question.
Well, it would, except those 275 haven't done site-specific sequo. They haven't had the sensitive species habitat review. And so why are there 275 county, on the county side, but 800 on the state side? Shouldn't those two be in sync?
I'll let Meg or Brent answer that because those, almost all of those permits were issued prior to the program coming to planning and building.
So were they issued in error?
I'll defer to Brent and Meg on that.
This is Brent Schultz, Planning and Building Services Director. The applications that were done before we took it over the process, I do think some have some sensitive species review done, others don't. I don't have that precise number with me right here because I just don't have it. So.
So Brent, one of the difficulties I have is the public is going to hold me to making decisions based on data. We're back at the problem we're having with the state over shutting down the salons without the data. We're talking about scrapping a program. And the, I don't know, a year and a half in, why there are 800 state temporary licenses, but only 275 county. To me, without an explanation, it looks like we issued about, I don't know, 600, 550 state provisionals that shouldn't have been issued. And the reason I bring it up, it's really part and parcel to this proposed transition. And some of the criticism I get about the program, the stuff, some of the sites that are not environmentally sound, are those in the 800 or are those in the 275? Are people complaining about sites that are not following the county ordinance, that are maybe technically in the regulated market, but, you know, in name only, in embossed receipt only? Or are they complaining about sites that are really operating under the permitting process and our ordinance isn't as stringent as it should be? I don't, if I don't have clarity a year and a half in, how can the public gain clarity on what's happening?
If we could, if we could speak to that issue, according to our, the history we heard on the program, we were given formal direction to issue permits if we had LSAA's on the program, the former staff. In our deep dive looking at this, we see a lot of these reviews were not done right. So, you know, per the ordinance, if you apply 10A17 to our process, you asked us to look at what are the roadblocks to getting things done and being able to get a state annual license? Well, this is some of the roadblocks, sensitive species review being sent over to CDFW, and no approval, just as exactly the wording that it says in the ordinance of 10A17. So, and you heard what Trent said Supervisor Williams, the state doesn't do site-specific review. You know, it's interesting, I asked them, how many sequel reviews will you do there if we send our applicants to you and you do it? We don't have any staff to do that, Brent. That's you guys. You're the lead agency.
I hear you, and I think the current staff has just inherited a pile of, and, you know, everyone involved at this point is trying to wade through it and reach the finish line. But I think what I'm hearing is while some of us think we're so close to the finish line that those 800 provisionals, if we were to be strict about ensuring each one follows our ordinance, we may find some, maybe quite a few, were issued where they should not have been issued. And that doesn't reflect on current staff. That's something from the past that we've all inherited. But I think we owe it to the public to be transparent. What is that count? Are we talking about 10%? Are we talking about 50%? When you say some of the applicants wouldn't get to the finish line and get the annual ballpark, is that half? Is it the majority? How would you rate the level of failure case?
Chair Hasek, if I could address that. Here's the difficulty supervisors. It's not like you have an urban environment where I have no sensitive species. We have, here's a good example. You know, in my discussions recently on one of the projects, the CDFW said, I need a bullfrog management plan here. Well, I can't condition a ministerial permit with a bullfrog management plan. It's not possible. So therefore, it's denied. Or there's spotted owl out there. But I tell them, but I have an ordinance that already says you can't have those lights on. Sorry, I need a spotted owl management plan. You cannot condition a ministerial ordinance. That's the problem. It's a pass fail. And the, and I know, you know, many in the industry here think it's, there's going to, this is going to be a process that we can easily get through. I can't tell you how many people can get through. If you tell us to keep doing Phase One and Two and do a discretionary process with this table, I cannot tell you because each site may have not had this thing, a biological study showing me where the blooming of a certain plant is, what's going on in the adjacent properties, if there's a wetlands there, if there's a riparian stream there. Julia can tell you on and on and on because of her great experience on the coast with this. And CDFW trying to work, condition these sites. I mean, that's what the Coastal November permit is full of this, conditioning all these things. And we have, you know, talked to Jesse Davis about how difficult it is on some of these sites. Some will never make it. There's some that will, I do think. But I'm, you know, if it was, if this was a discretionary process with admin permits, minor use and use permits, I could tell you, we can condition these, and I think a vast majority will make it. Because you can condition those. But the problem is, when you have stuff that come up on these biological studies, you, how do you condition a ministerial ordinance? I've never seen it done before supervisors.
So I'm about to use up my quota of questions here, but of, if we were to keep the current process in place for the existing applicants that are stuck in our queue, how many do you see reaching a state annual permit? And, you know, we're not holding you to it, but you are the leading expert here on planning.
Impossible to tell you because so much work needs to go into each CFA project description, and there's information we don't have. The state doesn't have it. The LSAA did not get, does not give extensive, broad site plan, site-specific information on the biological botanical conditions there and the sensitive species, just doesn't exist.
Understood. So in closing, I support the staff recommendation, but I would like the opportunity to communicate with CDFA and figure out how we can all get at the same table. Because I don't want to go down the process and then later have the state, one of state agency, tell us, we were almost finished, we just needed to, you know, submit a project description and we were good to go, we could get these people through. I think we need CDFA, CDFW, and a county at a minimum sitting together and all agreeing on the predicament and the shortest path to get our existing applicants their state licenses. And I've been on the sidelines, I've never been on the cannabis ad hoc, the cultivation ad hoc, so I don't know all the intricacies and nuances of why it's stuck. But from the outside, I probably have the perspective the public has, just, you know, eye roll, what's going on here? Lots of money, lots of time, we're scrapping the program. What does it mean? It's really open-ended. We, I would like the opportunity to be involved in those discussions with the state, document why it is we're stuck and that it's impossible, gain public support, get all the questions answered, and then move forward as quickly as possible.
If I may through the chair, Julia Akro-Crog. Go ahead. Okay, thank you. So just, I want to respond just to Supervisor Williams, just briefly, and just note that we've been working really closely with CDFA on any proposed changes coming forward. We've already had a phone call where we briefly sort of mentioned this proposal, and we'll be having follow-up. be having follow-up calls because we too, as staff, we want to make sure that there is no issue by switching our direction and that we're not putting applicants into a bad position for receiving annual licenses. We do want to make sure that we are working closely with CDFA, that they are satisfied with whatever change in process, if that even is part of the final decision today, whatever happens. And CDFA, they are totally open to looking at any draft documents we have, they've been very helpful in agreeing to meet with us. And so I hope that that just provides a little bit of assurance on that front, that we are working closely with CDFA.
It provides assurance on vetting the transition plan, but I think we also need CDFA to agree that our current ordinance is unworkable, that we will not be able to get applicants to a state license. Because I know there are mixed messages floating around in our communities, that CDFA thinks we're close and that this Appendix G will work, and they're using a similar process in other counties. So how do we justify to the public that this is indeed a dead end when CDFA is proposing a checklist solution? And I think what I'm hearing is that checklist solution will work in theory, but when it gets applied to our 800 provisionals, a great number won't reach the completion. How do we quantify that and how do we document it? And which checkbox will be the problem? Is it the bullfrog? Is it a wetland on the neighboring property? Or are these just theoretical? And in practice, a lot of people would submit the checklist and the project description and be done?
If I may respond to that, you know, I think the issue that would be within the checklist is the biological resources. And I understand, you know, and I think it's important, we need to clearly define, there's two issues at hand here. There's the sensitive species review issue, which is a local issue. That is not something that CDFA cares about. They are solely looking at, you know, that we have completed SEQA analysis, done that Appendix G and submitted it to them, and we've verified that that permit was in conformance with our ordinance. Our ordinance is what requires that sensitive species review, and that is the concern that we have. So CDFA will continue to say that this checklist process will work, but the issue is, we as a county cannot necessarily check that box yes under biological resources to say there's a less than significant impact to sensitive resources. And that's really what the true issue is here.
But for SEQA, we're looking at a baseline of a legacy cultivation site. This activity was already persisting, and so I don't understand why SEQA is being applied for these specific environmental concerns like the sensitive species. These are cultivators who are already cultivating.
So this goes back into quite a bit of history. I'm going to do my best to summarize it, but I might need some assistance in summarizing that from Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, too. But, you know, essentially what's happened over time, so we did our MND, our Programmatic Mitigated Negative Declaration for the ordinance. Then we did that before the state had done their regulations. And the state, when they did their regulations, they relied that local jurisdictions would do site-specific SEQA review for each of these sites so that they could just use that site-specific SEQA review and move forward and issue their permits based off of that information. While our ordinance being ministerial, ministerial actions are statutorily exempt from SEQA. But in order to try to work with the state to allow cultivators to obtain provisionals or possibly even annual licenses, we worked closely with CDFA to determine that this Appendix G pathway could be a viable pathway to satisfy the state, even though under SEQA, ministerial actions are statutorily exempt from needing to comply with SEQA. So this has been sort of an agreement to try to work with CDFA, allow the cultivators to receive licenses from the state, even though our local ordinance would not necessarily trigger the need for individual SEQA compliance on each site unless it was in an area that required a discretionary permit, an admin permit, a use permit, something like that.
Thank you, I'll hand it back to the chair.
Hey, Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think I just gave Supervisor Williams my time. I'd rather hear from other county supervisors what their questions are. I think I have my mind somewhat made up, but I just want to hear from the others. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor McCollum.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I think we're getting down to the heart of the matter here, and I'm looking at the staff memo for today's meeting. And page 1, the bottom paragraph, looks like the third sentence, and it, I think should be stated, this discussion with CDFW has actually been going on, and Deputy County Counsel Kudrowski could confirm, since at least 2016, possibly even a bit earlier. But, and it's true that our ordinance was adopted prior to the state, CDFA, making it very clear they wanted site-specific SEQA. Independently of that, we're dealing with a sensitive species review. And the staff memo states that at our last meeting, CDFW staff stated they believe all Phase 1 permities and applicants would require changes to their cultivation activities in order to achieve a less than significant impact to sensitive species. So CDFW appears to be saying 100% of our permities and applicants have to make changes in order to have a less than significant impact. And I think staff has made clear that if we do this review process, and let's say we think we've gotten through the sensitive species review, and now we go to the, what's been called Appendix G checklist with CDFW, and if there is one box that can't be checked correctly and a condition needs to be applied, the application fails. So my question would be, and it could be to Director Schultz or Chief Planner Acker, is my statement so far generally accurate? Is there a glaring gap in what I have stated? And then, secondly, if what I have stated is true, and if you need to apply a single condition, you fail, would it then also be true that if we don't have a land use permit system as a backup, there is no exit for these applicants? There is no pathway to the state annual permit? Would that be accurate?
This is Brent Schultz, Chair Hasek, if I could address that? Yes, that's true, Supervisor McCollum. If they fail, we have no process to take them through.
And this is Julia Acker-Crogg. And any condition being requested by an agency, since we cannot condition a ministerial action, we solely just have to deny that application because we cannot condition it to comply with that requirement.
Thank you. And I also want to thank Supervisor Williams. I think I agree with virtually every point that you've raised. One thing I think I have heard also is that, well, the question is, how many people do we think could make it through these different processes? So the pilot program with CDFW, which doesn't seem to be a fast track in itself, or the Measure G with CDFA, which also doesn't seem to be a fast track. And I'd like confirmation, are those statements accurate? But also, whether it's a fast track or not, do we think that at the end of the day, do we have confidence that even 50% of the current permities and applicants would receive a state annual permit at the end of the current process?
This is Julia Acker-Crogg, Chief Planner. You know, those are very challenging questions to answer because, you know, it's, a lot of this is about balancing staff workload and our resources, our limited resources in this program, and trying to get solid information and answers. So, you know, if we are to spend time going through each of these applications to try to get a percentage of how many we think will get through the process, that, you know, doesn't necessarily seem like the best use of staff time as opposed to us actually processing those permits, getting them, their permits from our side, getting those to the state so they can get their licenses from the state. So it's very difficult for us as staff to be able to answer what percentage on average. I know that Megan has run several numbers about the permits that we have issued, how many have been withdrawn, how many have been denied, how many have been canceled and such. But, you know, it would be very difficult to say how many are going to be successful at getting an annual license and even how many would be successful in passing sensitive species review, because those are relying upon state agencies that we have no authority over or control over.
Thank you. It does seem, though, there's concern about what percentage would get through, and certainly no certainty. I believe I heard earlier that in some cases where permits were issued, they were issued even though there had not been sensitive species review completed. Was that accurate?
Yes, that is accurate.
And I think part of that, the board can certainly take, and I believe Director Schultz may have made the statement early, let's quit pointing fingers at CDFW or CDFA or anyone else. The county certainly has more than its share of responsibility here. The board was not understanding why permits couldn't be issued more quickly. Certainly there was pressure, and certainly I was one of the people applying it, to encourage staff to, "Let's get these permits approved, what's taking so long here?" So I think previous regimes of cannabis management felt pressure to push permits out the door. And it appears that at least in some cases, if there was no sensitive species review, for instance, shortcuts were taken and permits may have been approved that weren't really ready to go. I'd like to thank current staff for not continuing down that path, which I think only makes it harder to unravel things as we go forward. It's unfortunate that we're in a situation where we can't even say with certainty that people that have received a permit from us, where we presumably applied all of the state conditions, may not qualify for the state annual permit. I think also we have some applications that we have received three years ago. I've read some of the comments, some people have had one inspection in three years. Do we know if there are some applications from three years ago that perhaps have received no inspections?
This is Megan Duquette, Senior Program Manager for the Cannabis Program. I don't have the specific data that shows of the applications received in 2017, how many of them received a site visit, but I can tell you that 42% from 2017 are still under review and have not received an issued permit yet.
Thank you. So three years, 42% of those received in 2017 still under review. I'd like to discuss my understanding of environmental protection. We've received a tremendous amount of public comment, which is wonderful. A lot of it seems to not understand the use permit process or what it would mean if the county did not issue cultivation permits, relied on the state to issue the state annual, and focused instead on, or in addition, on the land use permits. So, and I think Supervisor Williams may have mentioned this, or maybe staff did, but let me ask, do you believe there is overall greater environmental protection if the state is issuing cultivation permits and the county is issuing land use permits?
This is Julia Acker-Crogg, Chief Planner. I would say yes. Discretionary permit process provides much more environmental protections because through the lens of SEQA, we are looking at all impacts, not just biological resources, but all sorts of impacts, vehicle miles traveled, greenhouse gases, we're looking at everything under that, and we have the ability to condition it so we get good sites and with operative conditions that ensure there's no environmental impact. So I do think it's actually an improvement in terms of environmental protection. And as Director Schultz said during his presentation, the current ordinance, which has some protections, you know, the prohibition on tree removal, things such as that, that can be carried over and still become standards in a land use ordinance and be very, you know, narrowly, you know, can create a mitigation measure to address if somebody's looking at trying to remove trees or something. So there is this opportunity to actually have enhanced environmental protection by going to a discretionary permit process.
All right, is that it, Supervisor McCollum?
Excuse me, I've got just a couple more. Thank you. We've also heard comments from people that don't have a complete understanding of the use permit process. They're saying that it's in-house, it's secretive, it's not transparent. And in fact, I believe just the opposite is true. So currently, there is, I believe, no requirement for notification to the neighbors, for public notice, no public hearing for our existing permit process unless they're in a zone that requires a use permit or an administrative permit. So is that accurate, that the current process often is simply in-house with no public process?
I'm sorry, if you could just repeat that question for me, Supervisor McCollum?
Yes, with our current permit process, unless you're in a zoning district where by the zoning table, we require an administrative permit or a use permit, if you're not in that category and you only need a zoning clearance, then is it true there is no notification to neighbors and no public process?
Yes, that is correct. Thank you for repeating that, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding your question correctly. So yes, that's correct, there is no notification process. It's similar as we would do a building permit where you do not receive notice because it is a ministerial action.
Thank you. And then conversely, through a land use permit system, there would be notification to at least the nearby neighbors, there'd be a public posting of notice at the site, there would be publication in a newspaper, there would be a public hearing, there would be a referral to, I believe about two dozen agencies, including the State Resource Agencies, the local fire district, and then the public hearing process where any member of the public, neighbors or anyone else, could show up, make comment, and then the decision-maker would have the ability to condition the permit to address all of the concerns that were brought up. And if anyone were not happy with the outcome, whether it was that it was denied, or that it was approved, or with any of the conditions, either the applicant or any of the neighbors or members of the public would have a right of appeal. Is that an accurate description of the land use permit process?
Thank you, Supervisor McCollum, Julia Acker-Crogg. Yes, it is, with one exception. I do just want to note on the noticing requirements, typically we do two of the three that you suggested. So that would be typically publishing within a newspaper of general circulation local to the area, and then mailing notice to adjacent landowners that fall, typically we notice within 350 feet. But we have some, like I'll give the example of our wireless communication... communication facilities ordinance requires a 1,000 foot notice to adjacent landowners. So, but that does give the public the opportunity to have notice of the project coming forward and exactly as you said, show up at a public hearing, express their concerns and have the opportunity to appeal as long as they've established standing during the initial hearing on the action.
And that would be my making comments, I believe. Just one more. There's a lot of concern if we shift gears, we transition to a land use permit system, and we've got these 800 or more people in the current system. What happens to them? Do they have to then go through a completely new process? What's the cost? What's the expense of that, the time? What is staff's thoughts regarding, the current process may work for some people. You've been working diligently on that. If the current process will work for some people in order to get a state annual permit, is staff supportive of allowing people to continue working through the current process and then over time, transition them into the new process? What, what are your thoughts on that?
This is Director Schultz, Chair Hasek. If I could address that question. I think our idea was, yes, in this transition period, you know, we do work with people on this checklist and the, and the Sensitive Species Review, but we, we do have a process where they can transition over and get a land use based permit on the site from us that never, you know, that stays with the land, never goes away. The cost and the timing on those, Julie, is that, can you give the round numbers for?
For discretionary permits, it's typically six to eight months processing. And then I believe we went over the fees and at a previous board meeting, and I just do not want to butcher those fees, but generally it ranges from about $4,000 to $8,000. That includes the fish and game filing fee that would be due if your project were approved at the, the end of that final action. So, but I can pull up those numbers again if the board would like more specifics on those application fees. And, and timing is-
And I won't go into it now. We may also discuss the equity program before we leave this topic because that may be a way to assist cultivators in getting through the process. Thank you.
All right Supervisor Jordy?
I'd like to go to public comment.
Supervisor Hasek, I have one last-
I have some comments Supervisor Williams.
Yeah. I, I would like to hear the estimate of timeline. If we, if we give staff the recommended action today, will we be able to transition the 800 provisional licenses to annuals in time for the deadline of January 1st, 2022? And, and second, what, what is that cost?
Chair Hasek, if I could address that, it's to do, the, the permittees and the applicants in this process that are in our process right now, I'm going to tell you right now, with eight staff and in our, you know, the staffing we have in planning and building to help support that staff, I don't think we can get those done by January 22. We're down to a year and what? We got a year and five months to get all-
How many?
Go ahead.
How many of the 800 can we get done?
I mean, this is very, we're really pulling numbers out of the hat here.
The problem supervisors with this, Brent Schultz, again, Plan Director, is the staff has turned over here in the program. We have all brand new staff, including myself, who are looking at these applications and trying to straighten them out. And-
Based on what we have today, the staff we do have, or the staff we think we can assemble, how many do you think we can get done by the deadline?
If you could let us do a little bit of number calculating on our end here, we'll try to give you an approximation, maybe after public comment, but we do need to do a little number crunching over here.
And I'm raising these because I think the public will raise these topics and maybe it's more streamlined to do it once. And the cost, did you say about $6,000?
Typically, so it depends what type of discretionary permit the board goes with. So I will pull up those numbers as well. I believe we went over them in, at the June meeting, I want to say, but I will have to pull up my notes again to find those. But typically it ranges from $4,000 to about $8,000, but that includes the $2,500 fishing game filing fee, which is, it's roughly, it's really more $2,450, just about, but-
What I'm getting at is if we, if we pass the recommended action today, based on the average you provided, we're looking at about $5 or $6 million. Are we expecting the applicants to front that? They've already paid to go through a process and, you know, albeit flawed, they did pay. And I think we have a commitment to do our part in getting them to the annual. I can't see asking the applicants to pay those fees. And yet, I don't want to stick the county with a $5 to $6 million commitment if there's a way to get some of the applicants, some are all, through the current ordinance without spending $5 to $6 million. How, how do we make this decision today without the underlying data? $5 or $6 million is a big deal to our county.
And, you know, and if I could add to that, one of the things that we do know, we don't know how long the CFA SEQA checklist, we've got estimates and we're trying to work through a project description and process that everybody will be accepting. We also have a pilot program with, with CDFW we've been working hard on. We don't know how long that's going to take to get their thumbs up or thumbs down on that process. So it's, and, and we don't, we don't even know the staffing, as hard as everybody's working to fill these positions you gave us, they're all junior permit tech, permit planner one type people. They're brand new to, to planning. Most of them, we're not hiring, you know, we're, it's hard to hire seasoned, you know, associate and senior level planners who can, who could crank out a checklist and get it done quickly. So it's, you know, that's why it's so hard to tell you, well, I can do this many this year and in a, in a year and five months.
And this is Julia Acker-Crogg. I just want to add, I think, you know, whether we're under our current ordinance or the board directs us to move in this more land use specific discretionary permit process, I, you know, coming into this, obviously this does not start with our department, but I'm not sure that we could even guarantee that folks under our current ordinance could have an annual license and an appendix G by the January 1, 2022 deadline. I think, I mean, that is, it's questionable with our current number of applications, whether or not we could even get those appendix Gs completed under the current ordinance, the SEQA checklist, so folks could be eligible for that annual license. So I think it's important to remember whether we're going in a land use specific direction or sticking with the current ordinance, they're just, because of the number of staff hours, the staff time that we have, the, some of the, you know, lack of quality application materials that we have in some of these applications, it's questionable how many folks will be able to make it to getting a annual license if the state maintains their current deadline.
Chair Hasek, you've been very patient with me.
Yeah.
I know. I know. The one, one person we haven't heard from is Carrie Brown and Supervisor Brown, I appreciate she gave me her time, but I, I would like to hear because this has a big impact on her district and she has an ag background. I'd like, I'd like to hear her perspective. It'll influence mine.
Well Supervisor Williams, we're, I appreciate that. You haven't heard from me either. And right now we have a very full closed session. And so what I would like to do is close this right now, put it on hold until we come back. It will probably be 2 o'clock. Supervisor Brown and I can both chime in on this. We can then hear public comment and then we will come back. All right. So for everyone out there, it looks like we'll probably, it will be, probably be closer to 2 o'clock before we end the, the closed session. So I just wanted to give you that heads up. All right. And thank you for your patience on this. And we will be back at around 2 o'clock. All right. Everyone's online. Okay. So reporting out from the closed session, we have items 9A, which direction was given to staff, 9B, direction was given to staff, 9C, direction was given to staff.
Chair Hasek, your audio is really bad.
I'm thinking, Chair Hasek, this is Deputy Clerk Lindsay Dunham. I think if you turn your speakers down a little bit.
How's that? Can you hear me?
I, I can hear you. Can you speak a little more? You sounded warbly before.
What's happening?
You got a little, it's a little warbly.
Yeah, I'm hearing that on my side too. Okay. How's that? No?
I think it's okay. Let's go ahead and proceed. We'll see what we can do on our end.
How about if I sign off and sign back in?
Let's do, try that.
Okay.
Sorry everyone about that technological problem. And hopefully we won't have any more of those for the rest of the day. So as I was saying, on, for the closed session, item 9A was staff, direction was given to staff. On 9B and 9C, direction was given to staff. On 9D, there was language and I need to pull it up because, I will pull it up in just a minute. And on 9, let's see, E, direction was given to staff. So, so if we could, trying to pull up the language that I needed to do for 9D.
Mr. Chair, if, if I may, I may be able to simply read off the, the statement if that would be easier for you?
Okay, I have it now.
Oh.
Okay. So on item 9D, the Board of Supervisors has authorized the acquisition of real property located at APN 184-044-10-00131 Whitmore Lane, Ukiah, California. The purchase price is $2.2 million. The owners are Joseph and Teresa Calibatuccio. Direction has been given to staff regarding the property purchase, including the terms and amount of purchase. A sales agreement and escrow instructions will be presented at a future board meeting date for Board of Supervisors' consideration. The motion was made by Supervisor Williams. Supervisor McCowen made the second and it was approved unanimously. All right. So moving back to, continuing on with item 5B. Okay, let's see Supervisor Brown, did you have any comments?
Well, it's, it's, we've, we've waited a long time to get going again and we've got still a lot to do today. I have, I thought I had pretty much made up my mind in which direction to go on, on some of the issues that we have today. But as my colleagues have asked questions and responses are coming back, I'm just not sure. I'm conflicted again. I strongly feel Supervisor Williams asked me what's happening in the first district. Well, as a county supervisor representing the first district, we all want an expedient process. And one of the reasons why is I feel that there are some permittees that are using these permits or at least filing for them, are using them as a cover. And I think these are a lot of absentee landowners. What we have going on is a lot of devastation. Bringing in rock and on good prime agricultural land, putting up hoop houses, nobody can find out if they have permits. People are devastated because they have no way to weigh in, so to speak, on what permitted cannabis grows are going on next door to their property, the high fences, the moonscaping that's going on of all the trees and vegetation that otherwise was enjoyed. So I'm not sure just how to go, but we've got to fix it. And we've got to fix it for those that are in the process and doing the right thing. So that's where I stand. I want to hear final comment by all of you. I know Supervisor Hasek, you have a number of questions, but I do think everything that is going on, we have to fix it. It's the right thing to do. Thank you.
All right. And I'll just go in and start making my comments, but I can't see anyone right now. So anyway-
Mr. Chair, I believe we're still in the questions of staff phase rather than a board discussion per se. And after your questions, I do have some additional.
Well, you know, we, we've been making comments about this. Supervisor Brown just made some comments. So Supervisor Williams started it off with comments. I will certainly have some questions and comments. So thank you. You know, well, I have a question about going back to the, when we had the cannabis ad hoc and there were recommendations made in February, and those three recommendations were to streamline the existing program. And they had to do with the annual inspections, the live scan and the lake and stream alteration agreements. Those were, were all approved unanimously by the board and yet they haven't been brought back to the board, you know? And that's a simple thing to, to work into our system to make it work better. So I'm wondering from staff, why those haven't been brought back?
Put it all together some more.
This is Julia Acker-Crogg. So, you know, we did, yes, we received that direction. I think it was items two, three, and four, I think, on that memorandum that had been presented by the ad hoc. And just with these next discussions that happened, then about talking to move in this land use specific direction, it doesn't really make sense in terms of a staff time perspective for us to begin work on those ordinance changes if we're going to be making more changes. So that was the reasoning. I think after today's meeting, we certainly can begin moving forward in what, with whatever direction we receive today.
All right. So this has been a long process and I'm sure that we all agree that, that what we want for the applicants who are in the process to, who have gone through the anguish of these last few years, to be able to get to the finish line. The question is, how far is that finish line for these people? And if it's possible, you know, when we see from staff- You know, when we see from staff that they're quoting CDFW as saying everyone is going... All applicants are going to have to change their cultivation styles. That's concerning, but that's not what I've heard from CDFW. And so, you know, I got kind of involved in this a month or so ago when I started pushing for greater communication with CDFA and CDFW. And with CDFA, you know, when I was on that call on June 22, what I heard was, you know, you do this description, which, according to lots of the cultivators I've talked to, that description is part of the state process. You include that with that checklist, the appendix G, and then you're good to go. That was their statement, was you're good to go. And it would take two to four weeks for CDFA to process the application at that point. That seemed very hopeful. You know, when I got involved with the CDFW and talked to their staff, that then we started having some conversations between our staff and the state and to see what the glitch was. Then we had a couple meetings, and then I was called off. You know, that I was not to attend the following meeting. And the reports I've gotten from CDFW is that things are going very well and that they're hoping that this week, there'll be another meeting between our county staff and CDFW to finalize the language to make sure that there's a smooth process for dealing with these sensitive species reviews. So, you know, when I look at the big picture, I see that, you know, something's really wrong. And I guess it's a good thing that we've had this kind of honest, open talk this morning because when we hear that 42% from the applicants who have the embossed receipts from 2017, 42% are still under review, there's a real problem with the system. And so, if we're looking at going to a land use process, which, you know, there certainly is a place for that, but it's like, how can we get people through a land use process if we haven't been able to get them through this ordinance process? And Sonoma County has been having the same issues with their situation. And they were using a land use, and now they want to switch over to a ministerial hybrid because they were not able to process, you know, these applicants in time using the land use process. So, there's a lot of questions, unanswered questions about the time, the cost, the process. You know, we're hearing this correspondence of people being... Feeling like they're being let out, let down by the county. And I think that we do have an obligation to see these people through. You know, there's... We have 275 permits right now that we've issued as a county. You know, my question for county staff is, how many have we issued in the last year?
What, 38?
If you give us just a moment, we're just pulling up the information on the number of permits that we've issued this last year. I think we can say altogether, as you know, we've issued 275 since the beginning of the program in 2017. And we may just need a moment to pull up our issued permits from this year. So, if we could just continue on, and we're happy to report that number out in a moment.
Okay, great. So, you know, what we're looking at is the 800 that are in the queue, 275 that are in the permit, that have been permitted. And how do we get those people to the annual license? And what is our commitment as a county for that? So, I would say, you know, we do have a commitment to these people for having gone through the process. You know, the land use might be an alternative in the future for future grows, like Supervisor Williams was saying. But I think in the meantime, you know, what we need to have is a real sense of urgency in getting these people the annual license. And I think that the best way to do that is to be working with CDFA, CDFW, and if need be, calling in our legislators to see if there's issues. But what it looks like to me is that, as a county, we need to be making sure that our efforts are really in the right direction. So, what I'd like to see is an ad hoc committee formed that is really geared towards transparency, that reports back to the board, like every meeting, about what is happening with this process. And that the goal of the ad hoc is to work with the state agencies and the county staff and to really fix the system and make sure that we have a pathway for the people. And that needs to be the number one effort. You know, otherwise, if we're trying to institute this land use policy at this time, we're going to be divided. We're going to... It's going to be a mess. You know, so far, you know, what we've had is an admission that our program isn't functioning and that, you know, we need to shift to another system, which we don't have any numbers. We don't have the data. We don't know what we'd be doing in that system. I think what we need to do is have an ad hoc look at how to make the system work right now for these people. Get them through to an annual process and have a real analysis of our system and see what's going on. I think the CEO office, the executive office, might be able to come up with some consultant or someone internally who could really look at our systems and see what's going on and where we are with it. Because it just seems like, whatever number we come back with with planning and building for the last year of permits, I don't think it's very high. And I just say, why would we want to shift to a land use process if we can't even do what we're supposed to be doing right now? And we can't... You know, it's been very hard to get information from our county staff about what's going on with CDFA, CDFW. I think we need... We owe it to the people to be really upfront and be as transparent as possible with this process. So, as a chair, I'm ready to appoint an ad hoc to just be dedicated to this issue. And so, let's see. And what else? Another thing is the enforcement. And certainly, the enforcement of the cannabis program is questioned by everybody, it seems. Certainly in the Third District, where we have issues all over the place. And I'm hearing it from other districts, too, that if we don't enforce our own ordinance, then there's no incentive for people to be in the program, or very little. And so, I think that we really need to look at that, have an analysis of that system, too. Because, you know, I get complaints all the time saying it's a complaint-driven program. People are afraid of, you know, ratting out their neighbors, or they're afraid of retribution or whatever. And so, that system doesn't seem to be working. There's nightlights that, you know, people don't know where they're coming from, but they're coming from all over the place. And so, it needs to be taken care of also. So, I would like to... As a chair, I'd like to appoint Supervisor... You know, looking at where we are and how long this process might take, to appoint Supervisor Williams and myself, because certainly, it could go on into the new year. And really, to get into this, work with the staff, work with the agencies, and make sure we have a pathway for people to get their annual license. All right? So, with that...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have additional questions of staff. I do think we all tend to agree the current system is not working very well. And we do have an obligation to those who have come forward to apply in good faith to do everything we can to get them to a state annual permit. So, I think we do all have that same goal. One thing I would like to ask of staff, if direction were given today, to move in the direction of creating a land use ordinance and clear direction, and I believe that's what staff has asked for. Do you have an estimate of the staff time necessary? Could something be back in front of the board within two months, three months? Have staff considered that issue? How long it might take to get a land use permit ordinance in place?
Thank you for that question, Supervisor McCowen. This is Julia Ackercrog, Chief Planner. And so, the challenge is, we would... So, with any change to this ordinance, since it's in the zoning code, we need to go through a planning commission hearing after we've drafted our first set of ordinances and go through that public process, which, anytime we've brought forward any cannabis revisions, usually, as you're well aware, there's substantial public comment and public involvement in those. So, those can sometimes take multiple meetings to get a final approved ordinance through the planning commission. That's a recommendation then to the board. So, to be on the safe side here, you know, I would have to say that this likely, if we receive direction today, I can't see the ordinance itself coming back before the board until closer to the end of this calendar year, if not early 2021. That's really, I think, at the earliest possible stage. And that's really hitting on all cylinders, also acknowledging that, you know, we also have other priorities. We still need to process permits in here, too. So, there's, you know, and we have working with county council's office due to the health orders, making sure that we get through all those hearings. So, I'm giving you that estimate, but I'm giving it with a really giant caveat that there's a lot of factors that could change that timeline.
All right, and Julia, did you...
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I have a follow-up.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Getting it to the finish line is one issue. If we hit on all cylinders, do you have an estimate of how long it would take to have it drafted and ready for the planning commission?
I would say we could probably do that within a couple months or so, something like that. You know, I would probably want to err on more of the length of like three months just to build a little bit of safety factor in there. Now, that's for us to finish up our drafting of our ordinances, and then we do have to do public notice. So, this depends on what type of SEQA is required for the ordinance that's done. And that changes the noticing period from 10 calendar days to 21 calendar days, depending on it. So, that, once we have our ordinances done, we still have that additional delay before a public hearing. Same goes for a board hearing. So, three months is what I would say to be on the more safe side. Again, big caveats in there, just depending on how things shake out here going forward with COVID and then also with the public hearing process, direction received today. And, yeah, so that's... I'm sorry, I can't give you a really bright line definitive, but I do have to put those caveats in there.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. But it sounds like two to perhaps three months, maybe a little longer, because we don't have crystal balls. But it's feasible to get something completed in draft form for the planning commission to consider, probably within approximately a three-month timeline. And then, of course, the rest of the approval process. But the actual work of pulling the ordinance together could be done in two to three months. And also, in the land use permit process, I believe that in some instances, depending on the zoning district and other objective conditions, an administrative permit may be appropriate rather than a minor or major use permit. Would that be accurate?
This is Julia Ackercrog. So, you know, we have, as attachment D to your packet, the proposed table that was brought forth by the ad hoc. So, certainly, an administrative permit is something that we've looked at previously for certain districts. Usually, you want to do an admin permit in the districts where there's a low potential for controversy or for environmental impact. So, probably looking at more urbanized areas. Or maybe, I know the discussion has been about allowing it in the traditional agricultural zoning district as well. So, that certainly is a viable pathway.
Thank you. And I believe you've made the point earlier that certain features that are unique to our ordinance, our current cultivation ordinance, could be transferred into the land use ordinance, which would essentially combine our two existing ordinances. Some of the things that could be transferred or written in, transfer would be the current setbacks. The accommodation and exclusion zones, I believe, are in their own ordinance. Those would remain unaffected. We could have continual prohibition on tree removal. We could add that no new permits could have all of the plastic that we see. There could be no terracing of the land, no trucked-in water, no wetlands impacts, no oak woodland impact. And also, a prerequisite of Phase 3 is that we have to have an oak woodland protection ordinance in place. So, am I correct that we could build all of those types of conditions into any land use ordinance and that we are already committed to having an oak woodland protection ordinance?
So, thank you, Supervisor McCowen. So, yes, we could certainly build in any protections or standards that the board felt would be critical or important to protect the environment to bring over into any new ordinance, such as the tree removal, as you mentioned, or prohibition on water trucks. And then, I'm sorry, what was the second part of your question that you just asked?
I believe that it's a current condition of the ordinance that no one is suggesting voiding, that before Phase 3 could be opened up, we must have an oak woodland protection ordinance in place.
Correct, yeah.
Is that correct?
That is correct. And actually, staff has been working on that ordinance. However, when, you know, COVID hit back in March, we were at the point of doing stakeholder meetings. So, really, that ordinance came to a screeching halt. With that, we're still looking at opportunities to be able to have that input and that forum, but in a more virtual setting. So, we're still working on sorting that out. But with the extension of the opening of Phase 3 until April of next year, that does allow us time to get that ordinance in place.
Thank you. And you mentioned, we do have the zoning table discussion still to have. However, Mr. Chair, I know you want to get to public comment, and maybe we could invite the public to offer any comments they have on the zoning tables as well before we bring it back to us for discussion. But that's certainly at your discretion.
All right, thank you. A question for Julia. Did you find out how many permits we've issued this past year?
Yes, Supervisor Hascheck, this is Brent Schultz. We issued 46, a combination of nurseries and other permits.
What do you think?
That was with vastly reduced staffing from the year before. You know, we went from eight to 3.5 staff. And at times, we had two staff in our cannabis program.
Okay. Thank you. And, yeah, let's go to public comment now. And so, we've got an extensive list of people who want to comment. And I really appreciate your patience on this. So, it certainly is a big issue. And it's difficult in these technological, virtual meeting times. So, remember that we're going to limit comments to three minutes. And with such a big issue, I know that that will cause a lot of frustration for people. people and it's certainly not the town hall type of meetings that we should be having to, to look at these kinds of issues, but here we are. So, so anyway, Deputy Clerk of the Board, do we have callers on?
Yes Chair Hashack, we do. The first up is Sheila Jenkins.
All right.
Good afternoon Supervisors. I am skeptical about the use permit process. I've seen it before. It's never provided more protection as the staff claims. We've been subjected to the use permit process and we know how it can be used to circumvent environmental protections. A few examples come to my mind. The pellet mill in Calpella, the asphalt plant on Outlet Creek, and the Northern Ag Quarry. A use permit does not provide more protection than an ordinance. Exemptions can be issued and no one would know. Categorical exemptions can be issued and no one would know. We do know that use permits are often not enforced and that was certainly the case with the quarry. Discretionary permits are not more protective either. They are just that discretionary and left up to the planning staff to make these decisions. Staff that is often inexperienced because of a high turnover rate and making critical decisions for us rather than with us. This is not reassuring. It is stated that the public will be noticed and that we will have access to a hearing to resolve a complaint. This may or may not actually be true. The planning staff is claiming that they can make this process as protective as our ordinance, but will they? That's the question here. What assurance do we get that this would actually be done? If it is going to be just as protective, then why are we bothering with this in the first place? Let's be honest, the whole point of this is to circumvent the protections that we have and in particular with the sensitive species review. I suggest that we get to the bottom of the issues with this requirement and since it is not a formidable obstacle for other counties. I believe I heard today that even if the ordinance is thrown out and they would be unlikely to process these applications in time anyway. So let's just get to the bottom of the, of the review process. Our ordinance provides critical protections that are important. Our range land is protected. It sets limits to the size of the grows, the protections for trees, sensitive species, and no stacking of permits. We have no assurance with the use permit process that any of these protections would prevail. And I would just say in ending that something this complex with so little information provided for the public and just brought to this table today.
Thirty seconds.
Does not give us time to understand or process this information. The board in fairness should not take action on this today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Ms. Jenkins. Next, Atlas.
Next on the line is Hannah Nelson.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for once again taking up very arduous topics. Really, MCA believes that the smartest thing to do at this juncture, because there are so many intricate issues that have to be troubleshooted, shot, is to get on with an ad hoc, allow the supervisors that serve on an ad hoc to dig deep with both staff and the state agency representatives to try and figure out the quickest possible path for everybody. I appreciate and understand that the supervisors definitely want to not abandon the current applicants who have come forward and who are trying their best to succeed and continue to make their tax payments and keep employees employed in our county and comply with all of the environmental requirements and other requirements, both at the state and the local level. And I know, I definitely, we know that you, you want that. The question though is, how do we get there? And I believe that there are a number of options available and we don't know yet how feasible they are until more information is, is investigated in conjunction with the state agencies. I definitely believe that staff has the best intentions in mind, but really the priorities have been a little askew. We don't have a prioritization of getting people to the finish line. Instead, it's either been get permits issued, which possibly resulted in pushing things through too quickly, or it's been looking at things in the, through the lens of switching to a different system rather than figuring out how to troubleshoot what we have right now. At any rate, all these issues suggest the, the need for an ad hoc. Also, I, I think that it's worth mentioning that in the LSA context, CDFW actually asks sensitive species review questions and orders further information, further studies, and further layers of site specific review concerning those matters if in fact there's any indication that something would be implicated. As a result, it's possible that it might be okay and still fully protective of the environment and with our negative, within our mitigated negative deck to modify our ordinance to allow that process to happen through CDFW in its other system. And I think that's worth exploring as well as other issues.
Time.
That are probably too detailed.
Okay. Thank you Ms. Nelson. Next caller.
Next up is Dennis Slotah.
Dennis Slotah, 3rd District. Dear Chair Hashack and Board Members, I have a bachelor's science degree in biology, a bachelor's science degree in geology, and a master's degree in hydrogeology. I have reviewed all of the documents and attachments related to this agenda item. The planning department proposal to abandon the cannabis ordinance without significant public and resource agency input is not acceptable. The attempt to have PBS staff perform the sensitive species review for the California Department of Fish and Wildlife is very problematic. Planning department staff are not trained wildlife, biological, or ecological scientists. This is outside of their training and expertise. The suggestion that staff will be trained by CDFW is illusionary unless we hear directly from CDFW and we see the curriculum instructors involved and extensive training. This hypothetical training does not account for staff turnover at all levels of PBS and there was no requirement that trained staff perform the SSR. The fact that PBS is surprised and upset that the California Department of Food and Agriculture requires a quote "site-specific and unique project description" illustrates that they are unqualified to perform higher scientific analysis. I reviewed the CFA project description templates for rural and urban sites attached to this agenda. I found them completely logical, sensible, and not at all daunting or challenging. In reviewing all documents attached to this board agenda, nor was a requirement that a field inspection be performed by the person conducting the sensitive species review. A legitimate analysis cannot be performed without an onsite visit except in rare instances. Having no field site review requirement further highlights that PBS is unqualified to perform the SFA. It appears that the goal of PBS is to have untrained staff sit in the windowless office to rubber stamp checkbox SSR templates to expedite handing out permits to clear a backlog. The egregious lack of public input in this major proposal, which overturns the will of the people in the defeat of measure AF, will likely result in legal action against the county should the county vote to act on the PBS recommendation at this meeting. Thus, acting on this proposal will be counterproductive. Please uphold the will of the people to protect rangelands. Rather than the former biweekly reports on number of permits issued, the public is much more interested in regular reports on the status of cannabis complaint resolutions and enforcement actions by the sheriff and PBS as earlier in this meeting on COVID-19. Speaking on behalf of friends and neighbors, we understand that the ordinance may need modification as we go along and want to be involved. We propose that Mendocino County align with Humboldt County to ban trucked in water and conduct aerial monitoring surveillance as part of our ordinance. Thank you Supervisors.
Time.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Next is David Drell.
Good afternoon, Board Members. I just need to comment on a few things that staff made, statements that staff made. I, I got the terrible feeling as staff made their presentation today that I had been teleported into a, a scene from the Mad Hatters party in Alice in Wonderland. Because I couldn't hear, I didn't hear anything that complied with reality. And I, and I have a question for staff along with a bunch of other questions, but, but the question now is, with all this talk about the benefits of conditional use permits and the conditioning of a use, a land use ordinance. I wonder, in the history of the planning and building department, how many use permits have been inspected after being approved for compliance with conditions, even in the last five years? My guess is the answer is zero. So you can, you can dump a lot of conditions onto use permits, but if they're not checked on and enforced, they have no value in protecting the environment. I've spent the last 55 years of my life trying to protect the environment and it's very clear that, that the regulatory process is, is not, has been compromised in a dramatic So, and that's the benefit of our ordinance. Our ordinance doesn't need to be conditioned or mitigated. The conditions and mitigations are built into the ordinance. For example, compliance with sensitive species review is a mitigation in the MND and part of the ordinance. And so, so really, and by the way, there's no need to mitigate a permit for every application, for every applicant. Sometimes, just like traffic laws, they're not mitigatable. You either stop at a red light or you get a ticket. And it's perfectly fine to have an ordinance where mitigation is not needed, is not appropriate.
You have thirty seconds.
How much time do I have?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty-five seconds. All right. The board clearly does not have enough information and should not give direction to staff on this proposal that is way too complex. And there has to be vast, huge amounts of public interaction with this before this project is, that the ordinance is abandoned and a new, a new unknown project is, replaces it.
Time.
The, what?
That was your time.
Time, all right. Anyway, thank you very much and I hope you do not give any direction to staff. Thanks.
Next on the line is Michael Wheeler.
Thanks so much. Good afternoon Supervisors. Just wanted to say that it seems like much clarity has emerged since the June 24th business meeting where you all voted to have staff investigate how a land use approach to local cannabis cultivation licensing could work. And I wanted to commend the board for encouraging this conversation and for your dedication to improvement on this status quo. I thought it was fascinating to read the CEO report on July 21st where Planning Director Brent Schultz made clear that the current process is too onerous and that there aren't enough staff hours to process the thousand plus applications in the time available before provisional licenses expire at the end of 2021. And I think, you know, listening to this today, this is a pretty hard pill for us all to swallow. Obviously, we need solutions that preserve the ability for legacy cultivators to earn their annual license. And we also need resources and time needed to act on those solutions. As we all collectively roll up our sleeves, we are urging the county to think ahead and make sure that this considerable effort that could be spent addressing these challenges also anticipates future challenges. Firstly, that completing the annual licensing process may well require applicants to pay additional costs and farms unable to find additional funds may be good recipients of the equity grant funds that Mendocino acquired from the state. We support the dispersment of those funds fairly, transparently, and efficiently. Second, that generating additional site-specific information either through a SEQA checklist or an onsite SEQA study would also require a lot of extra time. And Mendocino is not alone in this SEQA challenge and we would encourage the county to partner with other counties and with the cannabis industry in those other counties right away to demand an extension from the state for this SEQA or for this provisional license sunset, which is likely going to require legislation during the 2021 legislative session. And lastly, thanks to participants in phase one and phase two, the cannabis sector is the only one in Mendocino County that's meeting tax projections due to COVID. We all know that cannabis is a proven economic support system for this county and we believe that opening phase three to allow new cultivation into the county ahead of the 2021 planning season will generate additional revenues for county services and needed employment opportunities for Mendocino residents.
Thirty seconds.
At Flocana, we stand ready to partner with Mendocino County to legislatively extend the provisional license sunset. And in parallel, we urge supervisors to direct staff to begin drafting a land use based cannabis ordinance that beats a viable path to an annual state license for all applicants, existing and new, with financial assistance for those who need it. Thank you for consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Monique Ramirez.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
You're muted.
Hello. Thank you. This is Monique Ramirez. I'm representing the Covelo Cannabis Advocacy Group today. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We submitted a memo that we hope you have had the opportunity to read. One of the things that is coming out of the discussion that you guys have had that raises a huge alarm for me right now for our group is this county is saying that they have issued 46 permits as of last year. I'd like to know how many of those were issued incorrectly, as was stated, that it might be because of the sensitive species review. I'm curious if that includes any of the renewal permits that have also been issued recently and what the county is planning to do for anything that was done incorrectly and what the mitigation is going to be there to make that right. Also, we want to state that the staff needs to stop, let's see, staff stopping a directive they were, staff did not follow through with the directive that they were given that John Hashcheck or Supervisor Hashcheck made earlier in his comments. And the staff said because they thought that a new change to our cannabis program might be made, so that way they, so that's the reason that they didn't continue working through that. And I just think that's not appropriate. They need to follow through with whatever directive the board gives them regardless of other changes that might be taking place. So I'd like, we would like to see that continue to be finished. And we need to see that the staff reevaluates the hours that it's going to take for both completing the Appendix G as well as the sensitive species and habitat review process because we don't believe that the hours that they stated are actually in fact true. And nobody's talking about the cost for switching to the discretionary review process and the cost of the checklist review. And we need to absolutely advocate, or we're absolutely advocating that the millions of tax dollars that our cannabis applicants and permit holders have given needs to be used towards funding this program in the right direction. And we need to just go ahead and bite the bullet here and spend whatever money is necessary to hire as much staff as needed to process all the applications. Because whether we do a discretionary review permit process or we continue on with our ordinance, there's still going to be staff having to look through every application and making sure everything's done correctly. And so it's very clear that we need more money to make that happen and we need more staff hired.
30 seconds?
So let's just put the money from our ordinance or from our tax towards that. And in terms of the zoning table, that hasn't even been discussed by staff or the board today. And I don't know if that's going to happen, but if it does, CCG is absolutely recommending that only 22,000 square feet of cultivation is allowed for outdoor growers only in all zoning that's available in Phase 1 currently. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Ellen Drell.
Good afternoon, Ms. Drell.
Hello, I'm here. Am I on?
Yes.
Okay. I was going to read a nice polite statement, but I'm faced, forced to be direct after hearing all that I heard this morning. Staff is lying to you. There's no need for this regulatory upheaval. It's not about money, it's not about time, it's not about state agencies. Staff is pushing it for one reason and one reason alone. Staff will not and has never been willing to accept this ordinance's limitations. Specifically, no new grows on rangeland, their zoning issue, 10,000 square foot caps, their size issue, and two permits per parcel, their quote unquote density issue. Bottom line is, staff wants this ordinance out of the way and that's the source of all our problems. Staff, the second line, that staff has a lot of work to do and it's going to take 40 hours per application and they're not sure if they can get the permities through for their state annual licenses in time for the termination of their provisional licenses. Actually, the county's permities should have all of their annual licenses in place in a couple of months. County permit holders can complete the SEQA checklist, the mysterious Appendix G themselves, and send it directly to the state. The county need only review it and keep a copy on file. As far as providing the state with additional detail that would affirm site-specific SEQA compliance for each applicant's project, CDFA outlined the process over a year ago. All they need is a description of the topography, the land uses of the site, the general land uses of the surrounding properties, and they would like, please, a detailed map that was scaled properly and it shows topography, infrastructure, and natural features. Not too terrible. The county's 2017 cannabis application packet sample site plan includes most of those requirements already and we assume the current one is not less thorough. It's likely that in most cases, permit holders could themselves provide the county and the state this additional topographic and land use information. County staff need only confirm its validity and add it to the file. The path to implementing a process acceptable to CDFW for possible impacts to sensitive species is also now open and reasonable. It's outlined in Attachment A and we urge the board to direct staff to begin that process as well immediately. Staff should send all permities the Sensitive Species Habitat questionnaire. It's simple, it's about six questions. The permities can complete it and send it back. A yes answer to any questions could trigger the county investigate the site further using databases routinely available to planners to see if there might be issues with sensitive species. If there are, in some cases, if there are, the county would refer the application to CDFW for review. CDFW has agreed in this pilot project to respond with a determination within 30 days. As with CDFA and its requirement for site-specific SEQA compliance, there's nothing that says CDFW requires the county to do the actual work, but just that the county be able to demonstrate that sensitive species habitats are being protected. Our ordinance calls for the county to collaborate with CDFW on a process, not that the county has to do the review. The applicants themselves, with the agreed-upon qualified professional, could have the sensitive species review done. And when issues are raised, that review could be sent to CDFW for CDFW's final determination. And this also would relieve staff of another step in the process. For now, resolutions to the state agencies are at hand. Keeping the existing ordinance is the surest way to state licenses for our permities and protection of the natural environment for the county, the twin goals embraced by the majority of Mendocino County voters in 2016. The existing ordinance can achieve these goals with a staff that wants it to work. If the present staff is unwilling to accept this ordinance and enforce it and continues to try to sabotage it, perhaps it is with staff where the changes need to occur.
All right, thank you. Atlas, next?
Next is Shawna Jevins.
Good afternoon, this is Shawna Jevins. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon Chair Hashcheck and members of the board. I support the repeal of the cannabis ordinance and reliance on the state licensing system. We're currently spending too much money on an ineffective and dysfunctional cannabis department that is understaffed with continual high turnover. In addition, I favor creating countywide land ordinances to protect woodlands, water, and soil, as well as neighborhood integrity. I believe environmental protections should apply equally to every agricultural use. This is why I'm in favor of land ordinance use, land use ordinance rather than cannabis ordinance. It is fair to all ag industries across the board. We can close our cannabis permit department and protect our environment and local area. These two things do not operate co-dependently. It is inappropriate to address these environmental concerns solely through the lens of cannabis. To do so perpetuates a historical and present pattern of discrimination and a separation rather than inclusion of a singled-out industry that has carried our local economy over time, even if it was an open secret. We know that our cannabis department doesn't work. If the focus is on healthy neighborhood relations, preserving water, the woods, and the environment, then keep the focus on that. I agree with Supervisor Williams in proposing and following through with general land use ordinances and regulation. Land ordinances are nondiscriminatory measures used to safeguard the land. And when I say discriminatory, I mean the discrimination against cannabis historically and currently. General land use ordinances rather than cannabis use ordinances include all agriculture equally. The current county process in place to deny the permitting of outdoor cultivation sites for cannabis farmers while still allowing the permitting of indoor grows not only furthers the historical criminalization and stigma around this plant, it does not promote sound environmental best practice. It is discriminatory to deny permitting of farms on rangeland. Rangeland uses as per Mendocino County definitions include row and field crops as well as horticulture, Chapter 20.032, and cottage industries, Chapter 20.024. To discriminate against cannabis farms' use of rangeland and allow other classified rangeland industries such as cattle grazing and timber harvest is unjust. All classified land use definitions as set forth by Mendocino zoning classified definitions should be included. The impact of livestock on land has historically been the greatest source of rangeland and woodland degradation. This is a fact. Livestock produce far more manure and urine runoff increase, yet no one proposing a ban or hefty permitting fees and regulation on any other.
Time?
Okay, thank you.
Next is Charles Sargenti.
Good afternoon. Mr. Sargenti?
It's still connecting Chair Hashcheck.
Hello, Charles Sargenti?
It looks like he hung up, so Jen Perkachi is next.
Oh, I see Charles Sargenti. Let's see, Charles, are you on?
Mr. Sargenti, you are muted. If you could unmute your microphone and make your comment.
Yeah, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great, great. I had a problem with unmuting. My biggest trouble point here in this discussion and even prior is what I perceive as a breakdown in the, in the relationship between planning staff and the board. And I think, I think John Hashcheck gave us a perfect example of that in which he, there was a directive, a direction given and, and planning staff just decided, well, something, something else came up, so we're not going to do that. And that doesn't make any sense to me that, that if there's a question about whether the system is working or not, if that's the state of affairs, and the system certainly is not working. I strongly agree with Supervisor Hashcheck's idea of an ad hoc group committee and digging deep into all these issues, working with CDFW, CDFA, working with staff closely. I think goals should be both start-term and long-term. Progress should be monitored on a weekly or bi-weekly basis at least. There should be ongoing communication between the supervisors and the staff, not just once a month at a meeting. And I, I don't, whatever solution comes up and whatever the staff is directed to do, I don't think it's, anything is going to come of it unless there is a change in that entire relationship in the system. The board is the governing body of the county and I think it's their responsibility to take the reins and make sure that things are done that they want done and not accept excuses.
30 seconds?
And, and that's, that's pretty much all I had to say.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please mute your speakers.
Hi, I would like to voice my support for the memos.
Sorry, we're getting a lot of feedback.
Can you turn off your radio or whatever you have on? Yeah.
Hello?
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 Can you hear us? Okay, maybe we should come back to her.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, we.
Oh, yes, I can hear you now, thank you. Okay, really quick, I just want to voice my support for the memos submitted by both CCG and FCA. And I also want to say that I'm a cultivator who's been in the application process since 2017 and I currently still only have an embossed receipt due to a holdup from CDFW. So we really need a path forward for everyone in this program, not just those who have been able to secure their county permit currently. I'm asking the board and staff to please exhaust all the ways that Appendix G can be legalized. I feel very worried of the land use permit process and what it could mean cost and compliance-wise for cultivators. What I am hearing from staff is that no matter what path is chosen from the options we have identified so far, that there is no way for them to process everyone in time before the state deadline. So perhaps the county needs to appeal to the state immediately for some sort of extension to that deadline. And in the meantime, an ad hoc committee needs to be formed immediately to identify ways that we can address this issue. Otherwise, we are all going to wind up back on the traditional market, whether we like it or not, and Mendocino County will have more unregulated cannabis than it did before this program. Honestly, it's frustrating to hear people talk about Phase 3 while this problem is ongoing. It would be really nice if we could hit the pause button on that until this is sorted out and we've gotten everyone from Phase 1 through this program. I would really like to remain on the regulated cannabis market. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next is Ron Edwards.
Mr. Edwards, you're muted. Just go ahead and unmute your microphone and we'll start your public comment time over again.
All right, thank you. Is that better?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah. Okay. I am, you know, been going through this process for a long time and frustrating that we are still back conflating the illegal grows with the regulated grows. I'm hearing about water trucks, I'm hearing about gravel, I'm hearing about trees cut. All of those things are in the current ordinance and have been addressed and can be continued to address. I was also concerned in listening this morning that those of us who have been through the process, which we are business owners, we are not people who have invested in licenses, pay taxes, infrastructure, and following through everything that the county has asked for, that it's possible through this new land use ordinance that all of a sudden after doing all of the things that we are required to do, that we could be disqualified from the program. I'd like to hear more clarification on that issue because that is really disheartening as it is now with CDFW, particularly for me, having to put additional requirements on a non-cultivation parcel that I have to the tune of about $40,000. So I'd like it to be clear, I'd like also the ad hoc committee because I feel that there are some who would just like to run out the clock on this, to keep kicking the can down the road so that we would not have licensed cultivators in the county to where everything would be more traditional. So I hope that the ad hoc can get this moving forward. I hope that we could definitely work with other counties who have the same situation and problems so that it's not just a single voice in Mendocino, but I think a collaboration with the other counties would give a clear front to the state that we're not just sitting here doing nothing, but that the boards of these smaller, less well-funded counties are still working. And it was really disheartening to hear that Sonoma County, with their resources, are having the same problems, so I don't see how it would even be possible for Mendocino to compete at that same speed. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Corinne Powell.
You're muted.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Very good.
Thank you. I'm very concerned about what seems to be a railroading transition headed and, and most vehemently championed by Supervisor McCowen and communicated and infected into the planning and building staff to scrap years of work and countless dollars toward a situation called our original and existing ordinance that can easily be amended by the board. That is within your authority and purview. I believe that at this juncture, not changing what we know we must change in the initial ordinance and converting to a land zone-based permitting system is complete folly. I believe that all county energy, time, effort must be devoted to a pathway for Phase 1 and Phase 2 permities. Those of us who have been permitted locally and licensed by the state for up to three years now are incredulous that we could potentially be thrown under the bus because of actions proposed and thinking that the planning and building department has a solution. It, it really upsets me when I remember hearing Mr. Schultz only months ago pouting
Good afternoon. Ms. Wordhouse?
Hello, thank you. Um, screen blacked out there for a minute. My name is Heidi Wordhouse. I am a small ranch owner with 590 acres, and I rent space to three different permitted gardens and a fourth that's trying to get underway to be a microbusiness. Um, I wanted to clear up some misperceptions that I've been hearing over and over again. Clearly, anyone who holds an LSA, any farmer who has a county license or a state license, even provisional, has already performed a detailed project, project description, a water resource modification project description, a sensitive species report that meets the SEQA guidelines, section 15380, along with measures to protect fish and wildlife, sediment erosion control, water use, diversion, obstruction, uh, information about the reservoir and ponds, involved anybody who has an LSA or OP Law from CDFW has gone through that. So when someone tells you that a local, uh, receipt holder or a county permit holder has not done their sensitive species review, please think carefully on this information and know that they have. Um, in that regard, I would like gently request that the board enact an administrative interpretation policy stating that an LSA agreement or OP Law agreement consists, uh, constitutes compliance with the county requirement for a sensitive species review. It is in there. If you need to see the CDFW questionnaire and the information they ask for, I'm happy to forward that to you. Um, just have Atlas get in touch with me. Um, secondly, I would really appreciate it if we as a community could stop or no longer allow the historical punitive behavior that is imposed on cannabis farmers. Um, as I said, I have 590 acres, less than half an acre is in cannabis. The rest of my land is either in timberland production or is, uh, has cattle, and I am here to tell you, my cattle, which are allowed to go in streams and creeks, which are allowed to go pretty much wherever they want, all over my land, cause vastly more damage than the gardens who have their plants in planter beds. So when people tell you, hey, let's preserve our rangeland, let's, uh, keep it from being destroyed by these awful cannabis farmers, I'm here to tell you that the cannabis farmers are not destroying the land, at least the licensed ones. I won't speak for the, uh, unregulated licensed ones. But as a rancher, I have concerns about some of the strictures being put on cannabis farmers, particularly the hauling water and use permits and things like that. I look at this and I wonder how long is it until I, as a rancher, am no longer allowed to haul in water for my cattle? If we're going to be fair, we need to be fair. If we don't allow cannabis farmers to haul in water, then we shouldn't allow any other farmer or rancher to, uh, haul in water. And so, um, this is a very narrow interpretation of the ordinance. Sorry, the plant...
Time?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wordhouse.
Next on the line is Blair Alclair.
Good afternoon. Yes, good afternoon. Hi.
Go ahead.
My name is Blair Alclair, and I am a cannabis grower out in Covelo Round Valley, and we are a regenerative farm. We also farm vegetables and animals, and, um, I would just, um, really like to, uh, first, um, say that we fully support the MCA memo and also the ca-, uh, the cannabis group here in Covelo, CCAG. And from what I've been hearing and what I've been reading for the past, uh, few days and everything and, and weeks leading up to this, is that, um, all attention, I strongly believe, needs to be spent by staff in order to get our current, um, applicants, not only the ones who have permits, but also the ones who are in the application phase. We're just sort of in that limbo stage of waiting for sensitive species review and, um, SEQA to be able to, um, move on and into this program. And I don't think any staff should, time should be taken to trying to redo the program or trying to get more people into the program until we know that the people who are in the program, who have been growing here in the county, who have been contributing to the county, contributing tax dollars, that those folks are, are allowed to continue in 2022, and that is right around the corner and not very far away. And to hear how long it would take for staff to compile and work on the land use permit, and then to have all of us go through that and be in front of and, um, have to go through public comment. Also, I'd like to, um, second what the person before me said. Um, I live in Covelo, as I said before, and I can't tell you, uh, how many acres and acres and acres of land I see overgrazed by cattle. And our little farm here, only 10,000 square feet, um, where we're growing a diversity of crops, I can't tell you the amount of native pollinators and improvement in the biology that we've been able to create on just this little piece of land. And we raise animals too, but we do it in a regenerative way as well. And to say that cannabis is a degradation of the land and to hear that staff potentially is making a lot of assumptions that a lot of the cannabis growers are less impactful than the other kinds of agriculture that's going on here in this county is, I think, definitely the wrong way to look at it. And if all the grows down in Santa Barbara and other places where they're growing acres and acres and hoop houses can get permitted and go through things, our tiny little family farms should definitely, the county should be doing everything they can in order to ensure that we're able to continue our livelihood and continue to contribute to our communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Tracy Pilar.
Can you hear me? Am I muted?
No, you're fine. Go ahead.
Awesome. So, so many people said so many good things, and I think the bottom line here is, yes, ad hoc, definitely. We need so much more information. I love our ordinance. Our ordinance is for the people, by the people. Now, we need to clean it up, it needs a facelift, I get it, but that's moving forward, that's still creating a pathway moving forward. So moving forward, we get our ad hoc, we get our questions answered, and as far as staff goes, when you give them a direction, please, staff, do the direction, don't second-guess it, do it, and if you're not going to do it, then you need to go back to the board and say, we're not going to do this because we don't think it's relevant. Tell us then that you're not doing it because we're assuming you're doing what we're asking you to do. It's very important moving forward that what we ask the staff to do, the staff does, the staff works for you, you're the BOSs', I believe in you, and I'm excited about the ad hoc. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Kate Marion Child.
Hello, this is Kate Marion Child. As the author of a popular science-based book, Secrets of the Oak Woodlands, I have a passionate appreciation for Mendocino's extraordinary rangelands, which are one of our state's most important remaining sanctuaries for wildlife. And when I imagine the patterns and rhythms of these ancient woodlands, grasslands, springs, creeks, and animal pathways being disrupted and carved up for an increased number of roads, pads, irrigation lines, et cetera, that would go in a state regulations prevail, I am filled with grief. After 2023, the state cap on permits per parcel will be removed and site size will probably increase. Our existing cannabis ordinance protects our rangelands from cannabis-related environmental damage. But today, we heard a proposal for a new use permit system that would undoubtedly seriously weaken environmental protections, not strengthen them as asserted today by staff. An enforced use permit might protect an individual site, but it definitely does not protect a landscape or an ecosystem from cumulative impacts. Even though SEQA requires cumulative impact assessments for use permits, they are virtually impossible to do accurately. How can you know how many lizards or jackrabbits have already died across a landscape due to depleted water tables or rodenticides, and how many more will die as a result of the issuance of a new permit? Use permits are designed for single projects such as Walmarts, not landscapes. Nothing but overarching regulations such as those contained in our existing cannabis ordinance can effectively protect against cumulative impacts. As far as the in-house decision-making issue, a use permit system contains various categories of permits, each with different requirements. The lesser use permits, such as categorical exemptions, do not require public noticing, a fact staff failed to mention today. I can well imagine that a department full of environmentally inexperienced planners might well feel pressured to save staff time and cut costs by leaning toward the less rigorous permitting processes, leaving the public out. With COVID, because of meeting access challenges, this is a risky time to make any serious changes, much less enormous shift to this proposed use permit program. Most Mendocino County citizens are not even aware this proposal is on the table. Please take no action on this use permit today. Finally, I also suggest that instead of an ad hoc committee, Supervisor Hasjack appoint a standing committee. For a long time now, the ad hoc has been mostly listening to cannabis cultivators. Cannabis isn't going away. It deserves a standing committee, and the meetings of standing committees are open to public participation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Devin Jones.
Ms. Jones?
Good afternoon, uh, Devin Jones, Mendocino County Farm Bureau. And I just, we did not submit written comments during this time simply because most of our comments that we submitted back in June, on June 9th, uh, still stand today. However, I have a few follow-ups. You know, one, I do appreciate the concept of trying to work to streamline the process and looking for ways of reducing duplicative regulatory burden. Uh, this is something we deal with on a daily basis in agriculture. I'm just not sure if we're at a point with what was presented today that that's going to happen. Uh, we do have some concerns regarding use permits that I will reiterate from our previous comments, and one of those is being that, you know, they can be more stringent with site-specific conditions being required. However, as other previous speakers have indicated, there really hasn't been an indication of a mechanism in place to verify that conditions are being met. And I did read in the staff report that discretionary permitting runs with the land and not the person, so that's definitely something that needs to be verified in terms of permit terms, um, in this process. Back in June, I also asked a question, and the response from the county at that time in terms of, you know, what would it take to look into more stringent, um, mechanisms for verification of compliance, is that additional staff within code enforcement would have to be hired and potentially an inspection fee would have to be implemented. So I don't really know if the county has had any conversations regarding that process, but I think that needs to be further discussed in terms of what does it look like to bring on additional staff, uh, related to code enforcement? If there isn't the capability to bring on additional staff, then I think really what we're going to continue to go back to is, you know, the current complaint-driven system, which has ramifications and concerns across the plate. So I think that is a serious conversation that needs to take place. Also, in June, I requested that, uh, regular reports be provided from code enforcement. There for a while, that was happening, um, so I think that is something that should be brought back on a more regular basis. And, you know, in terms of a couple of suggestions, you know, this has been something that we brought forward from the very beginning regarding some of the concerns with, especially the Calipari Department of Fish and Wildlife and some of the complexities that go along with permitting. And I'm sure this has happened, but I think it needs to continue to happen, that we need to engage with our state-elected officials to discuss these hurdles that have come to fruition and in terms of the role that Calipari Department of Fish and Wildlife is playing in this process. So I, I encourage you guys to do that. I'm assuming that other counties are having similar difficulties. And finally, I would say that the graphs and attachment D, we haven't come up with a position on those, and they need additional conversation in terms of where permitting is going to be allowed, if it's going to be reopened again for existing and new permits. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Serge Sherbatsky.
All right, am I on the... Please mute your speakers in the background.
Mr. Sherbatsky, you're, you're on, and please mute your speakers in the background.
I got it. There you go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Are we here? Sorry about that. Um, so, most of what we're discussing seems to be how to get all the growers that are out there in the cold, uh, into the system, uh, and we're seem to be, um, tilting our whole process toward dealing with these 800 cannabis growers, uh, some of whom have permits and some of whom don't, and who are in the process. And I think that's wonderful, and I think we need to take care of them. On the other hand, I don't understand what the rush is. Um, if, if they don't get to their permit, uh, permanent, permit status in time, they can, they'll just keep growing, uh, on the side as they've been doing anyway. Nobody's going to go and bust them, so I'm not really worried about that. Uh, I'm not a grower myself. I smoked a lot of pot in my life, but I don't smoke it anymore. Uh, I don't understand why the county can't just create a provisional status for all these people and say, okay, you guys are all in this corral over here, and we'll sort you out one by one, but meantime, you can go ahead with the state process. My concern is really enforcement. Uh, I live up in the hills, and down the road from me, there's a very large, uh, permitted grow with a, a new well and a new road and a new bridge and a, and about $50,000 or some investment. And right across the fence from me, there are three illegal grows that completely destroyed eight and a half acres of pristine wetlands, uh, with no enforcement and, uh, no permitting and, uh, completely, uh, uh, impossible living conditions until, bless his soul, Matt Kendall and his crew moved in and moved them out, and it got very quiet, but now they're back again. Uh, so my concern really is that whatever we do, we need to get, uh, some enforcement going on the illegal grows because that's what's really making life impossible, and that's what's giving the whole cannabis industry a really black eye. There are a lot of good players out there, and there are a lot of, uh, illegal, but we can't prosecute, we can't prosecute the illegal growers because we don't know who's permitted and who's not. There's all these grows everywhere. Are they permitted? Are they not permitted? We don't know. And I also like to see, um, some inclusion for the small-time backyard grower. I think you need a, need a, uh, a graduated permit process where somebody who has 25 or 50 plants could just pretty much pass go and pay $200. And, uh, I think those are my main points. Uh, um, yeah, this is going to cost you guys a lot of money. There's no way out of it. It, it's going to be very complicated. Uh, I, I wish you luck. I think you're all very much intelligent guys, and you'll figure it out. Um, so those are my points. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Chair Hasjack, we did have five other people sign up, but none of them are currently on the line.
Okay, so, so we're done with public comment?
Yes.
Okay. So, sorry to those five people who, who probably waited a while and are done now. So, let's see, I want to see from the board, we could go into discussion or we could take a break at this point. Any opinion on that?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would be ready to keep going.
eight and a half acres of pristine wetlands with no enforcement and no permitting and completely impossible living conditions until what's his soul, Matt Kendall, and his crew moved in and moved them out, and it got very quiet, but now they're back again. So my concern really is that whatever we do, we need to get some enforcement going on the illegal grows, because that's what's really making life impossible, and that's what's giving the whole cannabis industry a really black eye. There are a lot of good players out there, and there are a lot of illegal, but we can't prosecute the illegal growers, too. We don't know who's permitted and who's not. There's all these grows everywhere. Are they permitted? Are they not permitted? We don't know. And I'd also like to see some inclusion for the small-time backyard grower. I think you need a graduated permit process where somebody who has 25 or 50 plants could just pretty much pass go and pay $200. And I think those are my main points. Um, yeah, this is going to cost you guys a lot of money. There's no way out of it. It's going to be very complicated. I wish you luck. I think you're all very much intelligent guys, and you'll figure it out. So those are my points. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Chair Hashak, we did have five other people sign up, but none of them are currently on the line.
Okay, so, so we're done with public comment? Okay. So, sorry to those five people who probably waited a while and are done now. So, let's see, I want to see from the board. We could go into discussion, or we could take a break at this point. Any opinion on that?
Mr. Chair, I would be ready to keep going.
Everyone else? Because we're going to have to take a break within half an hour.
I'm fine to keep going.
Okay.
And I do have a suggestion.
Okay, Supervisor Jerry, you're all right to keep going?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Supervisor Brown, you're all right?
Yes, sir, I am.
Very, very good. All right. Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, we certainly have heard a lot of discussion. We've heard the presentation from staff, public comment. Rather than plunge into the zoning table, which we have to do, we would need to do that whether we stayed strictly with the current ordinance or chose to go in the new direction, we still need to give direction on the zoning table. But I think first, you might check with the board what the preference is, or maybe have a little board discussion on it. Do we wish to stay with the current system or continue to work with CDFA and CDFW while pursuing also a land use ordinance? And I think once we find out from the board which direction we're going, I would be prepared to make a motion either way.
Any comments from the board on that?
Yeah, I have a remaining question, either for my colleagues or staff. I think what I've heard, and I'd like confirmation, if we continue with the current process, we don't, we do not believe the applicants will get annual licenses in time for the January 1st, 2022 deadline, and we don't have the staff resources to complete this Appendix G. If we migrate to the land use model, the discretionary use permit, we don't have the staff resources to complete the process to get the existing licensed cultivators their annual permits by January 1st, 2022. And that process may cost about $6 million of public money. Whether that comes from the county or from applicants, it's still public money. Are, am I correct so far?
This is Julia Ackert-Crogg. Yes, your correct Supervisor Williams. I mean, we see a challenge in either direction in terms of getting all submitted applications to that point of receiving an annual license. That's really, I mean, some will get there, but not all, and that's sort of the gamble in either direction.
And, and I also understand that Sonoma County has a use permit model, which they believe has been the problem, and they're switching to something like our ministerial while we're trying to switch from the ministerial to the use permit. Could, is it foreseeable that we go through the $6 million exercise and we find we still cannot get many of these farms permitted?
You know, this is Brent Schultz, your planning director. And Supervisor Williams, one of the big problems here is, you know, when we pull these sites up, it's like peeling back an onion. It's not like we've got real clean sites on all of them. Some are real simple, but others are real complex with their topography, you know, streams, different things, wetlands around them, species, so it's not simple. But I can tell you this, we're going to have a better shot with a use permit conditioning those, and the state's going to have a better shot. You know, one of the things we have to remember here, that our ordinance was done before state law went into effect. The state is superior to us. They dictated that you had to have, this is a commercial activity, you need site-specific CEQA, and our ordinance never contemplated these state licenses before. So we're kind of, we're a little hobbled with an ordinance that was done before state law and doesn't allow us to. So I don't have a lot, that's why I was telling you, and I think you asked me before, I don't have a lot of confidence, not that CDFA is bad or CDFW are bad people, it's just how do you condition a ministerial ordinance?
So I understand why the current ordinance isn't working, but my concern is we're moving towards a model that we see in Sonoma and Humboldt. In Humboldt, with far more staffing than we have, probably than we can have, they're only processing about 70 use permits per year. We, it would take us, you know, a dozen years just to transition the folks who are currently in the program, in which, and during that period, there would be no legal cultivation. So I can't imagine them lasting through the transition. Part and parcel with this proposal needs to be a timeline for transitioning all of the current licensed cultivators. And I guess it's concerning to me that I haven't heard a sense of how long it'll take. It's open-ended, we don't know. We know we don't have the resources, but we don't know how long it'll take.
Supervisor Hashak, could I try to answer that question of Supervisor Williams?
Absolutely.
We, Supervisor, thank you, Supervisor Hashak. Julie and I worked on this, and if we are fully staffed and they don't get taken away for other things, and we, they can just work with our, with the checklist and the SSR process, right? We think we can get 150 or 200 of those done by January 2022. Now, I'm going to tell you, that's horribly irresponsible of me to tell you that, because I haven't hired the staff yet. Human Resources is helping us right now. We've got two of the planners, we're trying to hire two more, and we don't have, you know, it's kind of like I'm flying the plane while I'm building it, and I don't know what they can do up there in the airplane, you know, because I don't know how quick they are with the checklist or the SSR process. So, so that's if you did a checklist, if we just stayed with that, right? I think that's the best I'm going to do in the best of all worlds. If we did the, if we kept going with the checklist SSRs, and then we do a discretionary process, if you tell me to go that way, I think it's going down. I think we're going to be going so many different directions, we're probably, our efficiency will go down.
That's if we're trying to do both. We're trying to continue processing applications under Appendix G and process things through a discretionary process.
Yeah.
So, but the problem is if those 200 represent about a quarter of the current licensed farms, if you're saying best case, three quarters of the licensed farms will be put out of business, we, I don't know that that's a solution. We may have to go to the state, and I mean, maybe this is where the ad hoc comes in, and explain, like every other county, it seems, we don't know how to get through this maze that the state has created, right? If there's, if it's, if there isn't a solution, rather than just switching gears, maybe we need to be honest about there isn't a solution to this problem, and ask the state, what do you want us to do? We have 800 cultivators, we have this deadline. No matter what approach we take, it appears we won't be able to reach the finish.
That's a fair point, Supervisor. And I also want to point out, Lake County, they have use permits. As you know, Sonoma does, Humboldt does, just talked, I met the Santa Barbara manager, all use permits. So it's, it's not like use permits and discretionary actions are not being done, that, there's a lot of it being done, so.
But Humboldt has 14 planners working on cannabis exclusively.
You got that right. They did staff up, we didn't.
And they only can do 70 per year. So if we were to staff up to their level, which would be significant, I would imagine we would do about 70 as well.
Mr. Chair, I have comments.
Well, I have a couple of questions. You know, from, from the public comments, that when we're talking about these use permits, how many have been inspected after issuance in the last five years?
Thank you for that question, Supervisor Hashak. That is not a number I can give you right off the top of my head, because that is literally me opening every single file dating back to the 19, probably 70s, to see whether or not we've gone out to that site. That would be an obscene amount of staff time, and in my opinion, not worth it to get that number. But we do, as with everything, we have certain projects that if we get a call, we're out there right away. We have, we write into the conditions, if we need, if an applicant has to pay to do a site inspection, we write that into the condition with the fee right there and everything. So, you know, there is the ability for us to do this with the discretionary action, build in a cost recovery mechanism. That's usually what's missing out of the enforcement and making sure that we are in conformance with the conditions is this cost recovery on the staff time side. So there is a mechanism to be able to address this, cover the staff time to perform those inspections on it, but, you know, we also have to acknowledge we have a very vast county, and we have limited resources. So understandably, we can't be everywhere. We have 100 miles of coastline, and it takes, you know, two hours to get to the far side of our county, sometimes three, maybe more. So, you know, it's, we do our absolute best. We respond when we receive complaints, and, and, you know, that's really, I think, the best we can do with our resources.
And if I could add this, Supervisor Hashak, Chair Hashak, is that we have done 1,200 pre-inspections on the cannabis cultivation sites, but that, you know, our staff has been dwindling, and we're building back again, as you know. So we are going out there, and we are seeing, you know, on all, on the ones we go out on when we get calls to code, that the cultivation sites are different than what we approved.
So Ellen brought up completing the checklist could get us, everybody to the finish line in a couple of months. How does the public, how does a supervisor know who's right here? We're hearing very conflicting views. I don't, for all I know, she's right, and we're going to earn $6 million of public money switching processes rather than just, you know, putting a project description in and being done. But, but I've also heard from planning that, well, that's the next step, but it'll likely break down. Is it possible, here's my question, is it possible for us to try two or three of these with the most likely candidates and see what it's like to go through the existing check sheet process and get their annuals? And if we find it takes too many hours or we can't get there, we bring that back and we decide, okay, use permits are the only option. But if we do it and it takes 10 hours and we're done, then maybe we try a few more.
Chair Hashak, if I could address that?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Brent again. Supervisor Williams, we have not stopped working on this checklist with CDFA and with Cal Cannabis. Just today, we heard for back from, from CDFA staff, we tried a super, super clean, simple site. And I want to stress, this site did not have a lot of problems on it, it was consistent with what was previously approved, did not have a lot of environmental issues on it, and they liked the description. So that was positive.
So is it possible to get that site through the annual license?
We hope, we think so. I'm, Jesse Davis is here with me. He, I've had him on it, working diligently, trying to figure out how we, but he stresses, and he's here, if you want to talk to him.
Well, what I, what I want to do is see if we can get the annual, rush that. If we can, we have a proven model, and we don't need to, maybe we use use permits going forward for new cultivation, but we can finish the process for the 800 who are already in it.
So I think if I can address that, the, so the challenge is with the Appendix G, so let's just put it out on the table there. The current ordinance, you could continue forward with that, but you are going to have many more sites screened out, not be able to get passed at all, because they don't, we can't condition the permit. They may be great sites, there might just be one condition that needs to be added, but because we can't do that, that permit's denied, and they come out of the system. So the Appendix G could work for some cultivators, and we are, you know, still committed to working through, I mean, we've worked on this Appendix G for months, myself personally, and, but, you know, the thing is, it's not going to fix it for many of the sites, and we have such a diverse topography and such a diverse environment here that it really, there is no silver bullet, a one-size-fits-all. That's the challenge with the ministerial ordinance. There's no way for us to condition that. It's a very objective, you either meet this or you don't. So, you know, while I think that the Appendix G may work for some, it's not going to work for, for all the applications, and many that may be appropriate, they're going to end up getting denied solely for something that could have been addressed through a discretionary permit process.
I think we need to, we need to submit one of those and then pull it up, show the public, here's where it failed, and there's no way to condition it, so we can't go forward. What do we do? Right now, it's opinion versus opinion. We need to get to the level of having, here's an applicant that has no option to finish.
Supervisor Williams, if I, I just need clarification on what was said earlier, that Director Schultz, you said that CDFA approved the one, the test case that was resubmitted? Is that my understanding?
Changed it. He changed. Yeah. Supervisor Hashak, yes, this is Brent Schultz. No, we did not, those exemplar that I, that you saw, we did not, we pulled those back and did another site. I had Jesse work on another site that we discovered problems in those, on those samples, and we went to another site that we thought we could do the description on, and Jesse worked through that for five, six hours, seven hours to get it, the description in shape. Now, I want to say Jesse is one of your awesome, best planners. He's a seasoned person, he knows CEQA, he knows how to do project descriptions, so that is not an example of the planner ones that we're hiring. So, but that, yeah, we did do one.
You said that CDFA approved it?
Yes, they said the project description was acceptable to them.
And if I may, this is Jesse Davis, senior planner. This morning, we did receive response from CDFA staff that the description I provided to them for this particular site was acceptable. We provided that CEQA checklist to the applicant who submitted it to CDFA for final response. We hope to hear back later this week whether that was accepted for their annual license. And one thing that I think needs to be stressed here is that, again, the CEQA checklist will work for some sites, and in this case, this site had no new development other than the outside cultivation site that was adjacent to the residence in a horse pasture. Other sites will not be as easy to write the CEQA checklist for, in part because the construction activities are going to be very different. The CEQA checklist demands that we provide information as to the employees, the grading activity, the number of new structures, the amount of ground disturbed. That is really the crux of this document's issue, is that it forces us to describe construction activities in a way which is really difficult when you don't have all those materials lined up in front of you. And I think this is the primary issue that we face ultimately, is that describing the variety in these sites is so extreme. And even in the case that I submitted to CDFA that was successful, the ups and downs of the application process that the applicant submitted to us. At one point, this outdoor site was submitted as a mixed light cultivation site, and there was lots of information that needed to be worked through and understood to demonstrate to the state that this site, which featured no new construction, was eligible for an annual license. And again, while we were successful with this example, I cannot generalize for the 800 applications that we would otherwise need to process under this paradigm. That's the difficult part, is that not two sites are not...
I understand. What if we were to let the applicants write their own project descriptions? We submit it, we see what happens.
So we talked about this with CDFA as well, and applicants, they could have folks submit a project description to us, but we have to vet that. CDFA is, their expectation is that the local jurisdiction, that would be us, is vetting these documents, we're preparing them and signing our names stating that all the information contained within it is true and correct. And in order for us to do that, even if an applicant provides us information, we have to verify it.
What I would like to see is, we take this offline, we prove the success cases, we prove the failures, we count how much time it takes, we bring all that documentation back to the full board and decide what to do next.
Okay. If I could add, you know, I guess for me, part of the, a huge part of the problem is that this is the first we're hearing that we have an applicant that made it through CDFA, and that they are cleared to pursue that, get that annual license. So because of what's happened in the last month, we've reached that place where we do know what a successful permit looks like. Now we need to start figuring out, you know, and this is the first the board has heard. I don't think anyone else, I don't think the board heard this before, right now. So now we're hearing this.
Supervisor Hashak, if I could just let you know, we only learned of this during the meeting today, so I just want to make that clear. We only learned of it during the meeting.
Well, I'm just saying, this is wonderful news, and that at least it gives us a pathway. And we know that that, the Appendix G can work, and that's what CDFA said on that. And that's what CDFA said on that telephone call on June 22nd. If, if they know that the pathway is approved, then they can start approving these permits within two to four weeks and we will have our annual licenses. So, so we do have this pathway. I think that we, you know, like Supervisor Williams said, maybe we need to take this offline, we need to take it into an ad hoc and really work on it, but we have hope here. Okay? So instead of throwing money at a system that we don't have, you know, any assurance on, you know, let's keep working on what we do have and make sure it works right for as many people as possible. If it doesn't work right for people, then we, we look at alternatives. But until then, we need to have all the facts, we need to know what is happening exactly before we can make any kind of changes. So I appreciate that news. I think it's really welcome and, um, I look forward to, to working on this ad hoc with Supervisor Williams.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment.
Yeah, Supervisor McCowen.
Oh, thank you. Mute and unmute. Uh, I, I think it's great news that we've gotten one person through the appendix G process. Uh, before I go on though, I, I really have to comment on some of the public comment. Uh, the attacks on staff are completely unwarranted. Uh, blatant accusations that staff is lying, they have an ulterior motive, they're trying to sabotage the ordinance. Those are all completely unwarranted and unfounded. I have worked with every one of our staff members that we have with us currently. Uh, there are veterans of the ordinance, there are veterans of the county. Uh, they are dedicated, sincere, professional individuals, every single one of them. And they don't have an axe to grind or a dog in the fight, except they would like to see a functional ordinance, a functional process. That's been their interest, but they have also made it equally clear, we will work on whatever the board tells us to do. We will follow whatever direction we are given. And in fact, they have been imploring the board to give them clear direction since, um, at a minimum, December of 2019, but you could go back to May of 2019. They have only wanted to know, what would you like us to do? What initially do you want the zoning table to look like? They've been seeking clarification for that for at least eight or nine months. Uh, more recently, since the question of a land use permit arose, which direction would you like us to go? Stay with the old, go with the land use, uh, keep working on the old for those for whom it will work while we, uh, develop the land use that we know will work for many more. I, I have to say, uh, Mr. Chair, I, I'm not sure that everyone has really been focusing on the entire discussion and the meaning of every comment that has been made, but it's been very clear to me from hearing staff comment that while, yes, uh, these processes that we've been working on with CDFW and CDFA to try and make our square peg of an ordinance fit into the round hole of what they require, while it works for some, it will not work for many. And, you know, we heard the frustration and even anger of the public earlier, but I think we heard a bit of frustration from, um, our staff as well, when they came back very strongly. There are many of these current applicants, including some that got a local permit, aren't going to make it to a state annual license under the current system because they can't survive in a ministerial world and they will fail in a ministerial world. And with no alternative, no ability to condition the permit, even to correct a simple thing, they fail, they're out of the, the system, they can't get an annual permit. Uh, we've also heard, and I, I share the concerns of everyone, particularly Supervisor Williams brought it out very clearly, the current system, uh, it's going to be a struggle to get, uh, a quarter of the people through the system by, uh, 20, uh, 22, you know, by January 1st of 22. It'll be a struggle. Um, it'll be a struggle if we go the land use route to get that same number. The difference is however many we try to take through the system, the odds of succeeding with a land use permit are far higher because if there are correctable defects, they can be corrected. So, uh, if we don't give direction to develop a land use permit, we're dooming many of these cultivators to failure with no alternative to correct something that could otherwise be easily corrected. And in terms of the use permit process, I'll, I'll note, uh, one letter that we had, and I'd like to thank all the public for their comments, whether they agree with my position or not. But I, I did read every single one of them. Uh, I actually was up until about 6:30 this morning to make sure I read all of them. Uh, Julia Carrera noted that she works in Mendocino County and four neighboring counties. The other four counties, they all have a land use permit system. She says she has, uh, complete success with all of her clients working through the land use system. Um, and I think we've heard also that there is more environmental protection with a land use permitting system. And some people doubt that, but, uh, my experience with cannabis regulation in Mendocino County goes back to 2009. And from the very beginning, every ordinance that we have adopted has been founded on three principles. Environmental protection, neighborhood protection, and developing a workable system for cultivators that they could, uh, become legal and above ground. So that's been the consistent intent of every ordinance we've adopted. It is certainly the intent of the current ordinance that we have, but it's breaking down. We're not getting people through the system. We're not getting them in a position where they can reliably expect to get a state annual license. So some people who came forward have dropped out of the process, quite a few. Uh, many more people have looked at, uh, what has transpired to the people who've gotten into our ordinance and they haven't even come forward. And so what this has created, and we heard it from Sheriff Kendall, I believe, on, uh, June 21st. It's a situation where we have a lot of bad actors out there, mixed in with a lot of good people, some of whom are, who are in our permitting system and as mentioned by Carrie Brown, some who are using our system as cover. They're just hanging out, getting away with what they can. I think it's a minority, but it's there. And then we have, uh, other people who are well-intentioned people. They're, they're trying to just be a mom and pop and just get by. And they don't see a workable path forward, so they're not coming into the system. So we have spread out all over the map, people of every degree of intention and every degree of legality. And our current ordinance is not doing an adequate job of separating out those who want to be and can be legal from those who are just trying to scam along as long as they can, or worse, are doing egregious damage. So as a result of that, and we've heard abundantly, we're not protecting the environment, we're not protecting the neighbors. Many of the people who argue in favor of keeping the current ordinance say how terrible all these other conditions are. And I won't run through the, the list, but there's a couple of dozen environmental impacts that aren't being adequately addressed. All those ills are occurring under our current ordinance and it's because it's non-functional, therefore does not protect the environment, does not protect the neighbors, and does not give a path forward for the cultivators. So I don't, if, if we really want to help people get to the finish line of a state annual permit, while we pursue seeing who we can get through the CDFW, CDFA process with the pilot program and appendix G, we also have to move forward with a use permit system, a land use permit system, or we're dooming a lot of these folks to failure and we owe them better than that. So I, again, I would suggest we find out where the board lies on this. And if the will of the board is to simply stick with the current process, I'm ready to make a motion in that direction. Otherwise, I'd be happy to make a motion, uh, to continue with the current process as best we can, while also bringing forward a use permit process.
Well, I think that we need to take a break right now. So we've been going for two hours, we need to take a break for staff. So we will come back to this at, um, 2:37, right? Until then, we're on break.
I'd just like to say, before we get going again, that, you know, we do have the 5:30 rule. We're on page two of our agenda, we've got five pages. Um, so we've got a lot of work to do still. Um, I'm still going to appoint the ad hoc of Supervisor Williams and myself to work on some of these issues with CDFA, CDFW, make sure we have a path forward. And, um, and I think that the, the CEO should have a systems analysis of what's going on and to make sure that we have the right systems in place to make sure people can, can get through the process as quickly as possible and that we can get people to the, to the annual permit license goal. And, um, and if that's not possible, then this ad hoc can look at alternatives.
Supervisor McCowen.
Okay. So thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, well, I think we haven't finished this item and it's, I think premature of you to decide for the board which direction we should go. Uh, I would like to hear first from staff if they heard anything during public comment that they would like to respond to. That's kind of standard procedure. And then, uh, I would like to hear from the rest of the board. I think we know where I stand, I think we know where you stand. I thought I knew where Supervisor Williams stand stood initially, that might have shifted, I don't know. But I really think we need to find out from the board, uh, which direction do we wish to go in? And then we're going to know which motion or action is appropriate. But I would like to at least ask staff if they have any, uh, comments to make, any response to the public comment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, staff, are there any comments to what's been addressed so far?
Supervisor Hashik, Brent Schultz, we have no comments about the public comments.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see, Supervisor Brown?
Well, I've, I've been reading over on break the recommended action, motion. Um, but I am hearing a lot, um, from all kinds of speakers and anywhere from the Willets Environmental Center to the Farm Bureau, that they want to stay on the path that, that we're on. Um, but I'd like to hear from Supervisor Jurdie and Supervisor Williams.
Certainly. Supervisor Jurdie.
Um, well, we seem to get new information in each of these discussions. Um, it seems to me that if we move ahead with the ad hoc, um, they can adjust with the new information that keeps coming in.
Okay. And Supervisor Williams?
Lake County, which we've used as an example for use permits, I understand only has issued 52 successful annuals to date. So looking at how few Humboldt processes, the Aneem account in Sonoma County and 52 in Lake County, it's hard for me to envision that being, um, a success story for us in terms of transitioning. I, I, Supervisor McCowen is right, I do support the land use, uh, model. I think it's likely appropriate for our phase three. Um, but of the recommended action, I would probably be in favor of the first, uh, half sentence, direct staff to initiate the steps needed to create a land use ordinance for commercial cannabis discretionary permits. And, and leave it at that. This is an insurance, um, approach. If, if we, if we ask cultivators to write their project descriptions with some samples from us and maybe their own consultants to vet it, we can't put this on staff, we don't have the staff to do the vetting, give those, push those through the process. And if some are successful, great, they're done. For those cases that are not successful, we need to have a use permit model ready. And then last, I, I think the, the ad hoc needs to work with CDFA. I imagine CDFA is watching this meeting and they're probably, um, they probably have ideas for us, watching us fumble around. And I, I, I think it needs to be a collaborative exercise with the state rather than spending five or $6 million per, potentially to find that we have a new process that also doesn't work.
Okay. So, and let's see, it sounds like we, um, I think the best approach would be to, to have this ad hoc work on CDFA, CDFW issues, try to get the information and keep the board in the loop. Every meeting, we report back about who we've contacted, who, what the outcome is. And, um, we work on this, um, analysis of the systems and we, we move forward like that. And when we get to the point where we're ready to propose a, you know, alternative, if that's what's needed to get everyone through, then we'll have the information, we'll have it, um, we'll have time to make sure it's the right thing for us.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask a question.
Yes, Supervisor Brown.
As the North Coast Coalition that originally started out, the counties that were involved, um, why haven't we continued, um, meeting with them? We would know more and they'd know more about us. But I see it as a key and maybe it's for the ad hoc, but I, I'm wondering, have those meetings continued?
Well, we had those, we had a meeting at the CSAC conference in San Francisco in December of 2019. That was the initial restart of that. And that was Supervisor Williams and myself as the ad hoc for the regional coalition. And with the COVID-19 crisis, we, we haven't had any further meetings.
And Supervisor Hashik, I think part of that is, um, counties scrambling to deal with COVID and figure out how to come online. At this point, we're all accustomed to meeting over Zoom. I imagine we could, uh, try to begin that effort again. And it's worth pointing out, 75% of the state licenses, uh, across the entire state are provisionals. We're not the only county in this predicament. Three quarters of the state is facing this problem.
All right. Any further questions?
Uh, yes, I have a comment. I'm Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, as we all know, I will be stepping down from the board the first week in January. So, you know, it's not going to matter much to me, but I'm not sure if we're headed in the right direction here. We've heard from our staff the difficulties of getting people through the current system. We know that going to a use permit system won't necessarily speed things up, but there's much more certainty of the number of people that will be able to get to the finish line. We will have a functional, workable system that will actually have greater environmental protection and for the environment, for the neighbors, and a path forward for the cultivators. There's great concern about getting people to the state annual. That's what we're not doing. So I heard one of my colleagues say that, I believe, Lake County had secured 52 state annual permits for their cultivators. Does our staff have a, a number of how many state annuals have we issued? I think I inquired earlier. It didn't sound like it was a very high number. Have we broken into the double digits? Do we know?
Thank you for that question, Supervisor McCowen. But since we don't issue annual licenses, I would be hesitant to respond to that with absolute certainty. I understand there may be like one or two, I want to say, I remember from our phone call with CFA, but I, please don't take that as definitive because I would want to talk to them specifically. Yeah, we can check and get back with the board.
Well, but I, I think the debate is over whether one or two have been issued.
Yes, and, you know, just since we don't issue those, I just, I'm hesitant to, to say with absolute certainty.
Understood, but we're not exactly running neck and neck for the finish line. So I'd like to say also, I have spent eight years as a planning commissioner in Mendocino County. I've got a pretty solid planning background. And so, you know, the, the idea that some people from the public stand up and say, well, it's as simple as this, you simply do this, this, and this. I believe Ellen Drell was saying, we can have everybody through the process in two or three months. They can write their own project description. You know, I don't think that's the view of staff. Our staff has worked really hard to try and make this work. And again, it's trying to make a square peg fit into a round hole. Director Schultz has used a couple of analogies. I'd like to combine them. It's like we're in a, on a hamster wheel in a box canyon. There isn't a path forward for many of the applicants in the current system. Any further delay in bringing forward a land use permit system further disadvantages the people that are currently in the system. It's fine to continue working with CFA and CDFW to make this work for the people for whom it can work. I have fully supported that all along. It will be irresponsible if we don't give direction to also create a land use permit option.
Supervisor McCowen, I could support you on that.
Why don't we start thinking about a motion to move forward?
Supervisor Jardy.
I'm sorry. I'd like to ask a question for staff. So in the SEQA process, the planning agency needs to make a judgment call with a, with a possible project to say, okay, can this project be fully mitigated? Then if that's the case, it could have a mitigated negative declaration. If it's likely that it can't be fully mitigated, then it needs a full environmental impact report because in a full environmental impact report, you can identify the impacts, but you don't actually have to mitigate all the impacts. You can have economic overriding considerations. Could we craft an ordinance that allows the process we have now, which is ministerial and which essentially has, you know, has to be fully mitigated in a way? Or alternately, allow for an applicant to apply for a use permit because there are some conditions that could make the project fully mitigated. But, but right now, that's not an option under the ministerial process. So I'm just curious, is there a hybrid approach? Because it's not clear to me that everybody who's in the current system needs to migrate over to the use permit process, but there are some people who won't get their permit unless there is this more nuanced use permit process.
I'd like to second that. Can you rephrase it as a motion?
Well, first, it's a question of staff. Could we hybridize the two, two systems?
This is Julia Ackert Krag, and I mean, of course, potentially we could. I will say, I'm trying to think about it on the fly here because we really thought about sort of having this transition and then, you know, having the, the current ordinance essentially sort of phase out. But, I mean, of course, anything is possible. It's just how workable is it going to be for staff and what does it look like and, and how do we create that process? I mean, one of the challenges is still then we have to talk about what are the factors that kick you into a use permit, make sure we have those provisions established within a revised ordinance. But I guess my short answer is it could be possible.
But however, however, Julia, then you're going to have to open up SEQA. Then we can, the SEQA can be litigated and attacked. You know, whereas if you do use permit process, each applicant has to do their own, their own process. They have to provide, they have to, you know, do their own defense on their SEQA after it's gone through the process, as all our applicants currently do, right? They all give us protections for, for challenges on SEQA. It's on them instead of us. So that's something you have to be careful about.
Yeah, I mean, that's with any ordinance changes, we always, you know, whenever we open up our environmental document, which is the mitigated negative declaration right now, always open to potential challenges. But, you know, the short answer is it could be possible. Staff, we would really need to spend some time to think about how the nuts and bolts of that work.
And that's what the ad hoc can work on too with the staff. Supervisor Brown, did you have a, something, a motion or anything?
No, I was looking towards Supervisor Williams.
Supervisor Williams.
I move that we direct staff to initiate the steps needed to create a land use ordinance for commercial cannabis discretionary permits and continue working with existing cultivation applicants to provide complete SEQA checklists, known as Appendix G, and coordinate with the ad hoc on next steps.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Supervisor Jardy seconded. All right. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think the motion is a bit incomplete. I didn't hear a reference to CDFW and also continuing to work on the pilot project.
Yeah, I think that would be the work of the ad hoc.
Well, it should be stated in the motion too, I think.
Is that included in your motion, Supervisor Williams?
We could, we could augment it if you'd like.
Chair Hatchet, we, we do have that listed as a formal directive by order of the chair.
Okay.
And so I think right now, we, I, I believe right now we have a motion we can all agree on. So that's a good start. We have still some unfinished business and that I think we should come back to, but maybe we should vote on what appears to have support.
Yeah, that's what we'll do. All right. Any further comments on it? Okay. Clerk of the Board, could you do a roll call vote?
Of course. Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor McCowen?
Yes.
Supervisor Jardy?
Yes.
Chair Hatchet?
Yes.
And Supervisor Williams?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
If my name is to share, one, one of the issues that staff and I think many of the public have asked for is a prioritization in attempting to get people to a state annual permit. And I think a, an appropriate prioritization, I'll just suggest this for discussion, but it might be first, the currently permitted applicants. Secondly, any other applicant with a state provisional license. And third, all other current applicants.
Right. Yeah, I think that's fair. And certainly the ad hoc will be looking at that. And I think we're in agreement.
I'd like to give in a motion.
Do we, do we need a motion or do we just have agreement on that?
Actually, my experience is, because I was reviewing action from May 14th of 2019, where I thought we'd given direction on certain things, and it wasn't reflected in the minutes. If we have a motion, it'll be reflected there and easy for anyone to see what the action was.
All right.
So with that, my, what I had stated, I think I heard Supervisor Brown say second.
Okay. And further discussion?
I was like sure that the clerk has that motion.
Thank you, Supervisor Brown. Supervisor McCowen, I would appreciate a restatement of the new motion. Thank you.
Supervisor McCowen, could you restate your motion?
We would, in terms of assisting our applicants in obtaining a state annual permit, we would first prioritize those who have a current county permit. Secondly, we would prioritize all those who have a state provisional permit. And thirdly, all other applicants currently in the system.
All right. Any further comment?
Yeah, I have one comment. I support this, but I, I think we may want to look at allowing applicants to use their own licensed experts to complete the check sheet so that we can take the burden off our staff. Throughout the day, we've heard we don't have the adequate staffing. Let's try to find a way to offload this and let the applicants hire their own licensed consultants, in which case the priority may shift based on who has their application complete, ready to go.
I, I would agree with that. And actually, what do we do with regard to getting these people to that point is another decision point, you know? Who, who does what and who pays for it is still another decision. So if you would like, I would certainly amend the motion to say, or maybe, I don't know. I don't know if it has to be in the motion or just direction, but if applicants are ready to move forward to the state for approval, we, we certainly would not hold them back. I mean, maybe that's just understood, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, there certainly is understood. All right. Okay, so we'll, we'll vote on the original motion. Okay, Clerk of the Board, could you do a roll call vote?
Of course. Supervisor Jardy?
Yes.
Supervisor McCowen?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor Williams?
Yes.
And Chair Hatchet?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. If we can move on from 5B, we've done a lot of work on that today. So very good. We can go on to item 5.
Mr. Chair, we still have the issue of the zoning table?
Well, I don't see how we're going to deal with the zoning table today. I think that that's be dealt with, with the ad hoc and, you know, we can bring that back in future meetings.
Well, certainly we can. I would like to revisit the issue of the ad hoc. I think given the time crunch that we're in and the problems we have in getting people to the state annual, we might consider what the strongest ad hoc would be. And I would suggest that with my planning background, as well as my history of cannabis regulation in the county, if you want someone that thoroughly understands every aspect of the issue, I think I am very well qualified to be working with staff. I think Supervisor Williams has certainly been very engaged in the issue. You have also been very engaged in the issue, but you've made it very clear you don't support the use permit option. So I'm, I'm prepared to be on the short end of this one, but I think we should hear from the board who they believe the most appropriate ad hoc is.
And I did say that today, I said that the use permit, you know, could be an alternative. So I'm willing to look at it all.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Supervisor Brown.
I, I believe this should come back at the very next meeting, which I believe is the 18th.
Okay. I don't think we have the time. I think that that would be two weeks wasted, that the ad hoc needs to get the work on this. So.
In that regard, Mr. Chair, I would point out that you delayed by a month the initial discussion of the new direction. You delayed by a month and a half discussion of the zoning table when it was on the agenda June 16th. We're pushing it off again. And although you've said you view the use permit as an alternative, your first choice is simply to keep plowing forward with the current system, which is unworkable for many people. The idea that someone who put a garden in a horse pasture got approval after an investment of only seven hours of our staff time isn't hugely encouraging.
Well, as the chair, I'm appointing the ad hoc. And unless the board wants to do another, something else, you know, I think we need to start working with it.
I agree with you, Mr. Chair, that we should form an ad hoc today. And I may well wind up on the short end of this, but I would request that you poll the board, just so it's very clear where we all stand on the issue. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Williams.
If you wanted to bifurcate it and have Supervisor McCowen work with staff on the use permit, I, I think that would be possible side by side with, with us working on getting people through the current ordinance.
That actually makes quite a bit of sense. And there are distinct enough issues that I believe there would not be a Brown Act issue.
Supervisor Jardy.
Yeah, I would support that.
Supervisor Brown.
I'll support that.
Okay, so that's what we will do then. And let's, just the issue is the Brown Act and making sure that we keep our, you know, the work done in that level with that person of one, working with staff and the ad hoc separate. Even though I think that there might be problems with the ad hoc and figuring out, you know, the, the big picture without having that information. But that's the direction we'll go. All right?
And I'm certainly open to either Supervisor Brown or Supervisor Jardy joining me if they would like.
Would anyone like, so here we are, setting up all different types of ad hocs again. Would anyone like to work with Supervisor McCowen on this issue?
Chair Hatchet, this is CEO Angelo.
CEO. CEO.
Forgive me breaking in here, but I'm a little surprised at what the board is doing. I know that your goal is to have a successful program move forward and not create any additional hardship on the staff, except to get the work done. So I guess I would ask if, I mean, it does sound like you're doing two ad hocks. I think the staff is going to be in a position, again, of working with four different supervisors and trying to get something done. So I would just ask you to ask the staff if they have an opinion on this. And I would respectfully ask that if you're going to form an ad hoc, you form one ad hoc and you move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Staff, do you have an opinion about working with two ad hocks versus one?
This is Brett Schultz, Supervisor Haschek. We'd really, I mean, we'll do whatever you want, but we're, we really would like one ad hoc if possible, and just work through this, these issues. We'd be, you know, and keep them updated on our contacts with CDFW and CDFA. I'm just concerned that, you know, I'm running out of time. Every day that goes by, I'm really worried about that January 2022 date and us getting in a position where we can get as many people through as possible. And I can't, you know, I'm not, I wish, I don't know how I could get to how my feel, how nervous I am about that date. And I'm just concerned about the fact that we're, you know, the ad hoc is a great process, but it does, it's going to slow me down. But I will do whatever you want. I am here at your disposal and our staff is to get this done. But I'm just worried about multiple groups getting together and then with the limited staffing we have right now.
Okay, so I stand with, no, hold on one sec. Okay, I still stand with my original ad hoc of Supervisor Williams and myself to look at all the barriers and such related to CDFA, CDFW, and seeing if there is a path forward through that. And if there isn't, then we would look at alternatives. So.
Mr. Chair, if I may, it's already been established, there isn't a path forward through the current system for many of our cultivators. I would like to go back to Supervisor Williams' very wise suggestion of you and he work on the CDFA, CDFW issues, and that I work with staff on the use permit issue by myself. I think it can be a pretty swift process, because in my previous conversations with them, I think they have a good idea of what they need going forward. I actually think most of our work could simply be done by email. And given that they're two different processes, and quite a bit of work involved with each, in a way, I think it would actually be more efficient if I'm working with staff only on the use permit, you and Supervisor Williams are working with the other issues, trying to see how many of the folks this current ordinance will work for. But in the meantime, if we wait to see how well that works out, then we've lost critical time on developing the use permit.
Okay, thank you. We did hear from staff.
Yeah. And previously, we did hear from our three colleagues. They did support me working on the use permit issue. I hope they still feel the same way.
Okay, and we did hear from staff and from the CEO who didn't like that idea. So, so where are we as a board?
So I stand by my original position. I think staff can communicate with Supervisor McCowen by phone and by email on the use permit concept and see if that has legs.
Any other comments on that?
Well, I agree with Supervisor Jordy, but I do want to, I guess, advise Supervisor McCowen to keep it a short process, because I'm hearing from our planning director that, you know, they got a lot of work to do over there.
So I guess a good question for planning would be Supervisor Brown suggested that we, I think she suggested that we try to make progress on the current Appendix G first, and then regroup at the next meeting. Between now and then, does planning feel that they can work on two different directions? Or are we bottlenecked on staff time? Because if we have to prioritize, I think the existing cultivators have made it clear, they expect us to prioritize getting the existing licenses through annuals. And I understand the hurdles that may be possible, but I think what they've asked for is that to be the priority. We try that first. If it doesn't work, then we start using staff time in other directions.
Supervisor, I will work at staff direction on their time schedule. And it may be that I may only need to work with one staff person at a time, instead of convening that room full of people.
Could we?
But whatever they set, whatever they set as appropriate is what I will certainly abide by.
Okay. So planning and building staff, could you respond to Supervisor Williams?
Thank you, Julia Acker-Crogg. And we're certainly, you know, I guess I might need a little clarity if there's something that we would be needing to produce by, I think the discussion was about bringing something back for the next board meeting.
No, that was Supervisor Brown suggesting the issue of the ad hoc come back at the next meeting. I don't believe he was anticipating a work product.
Excellent. Okay, thank you for that clarification. So, you know, we certainly, we are open to following what the board would like to do. We're more than happy to work with Supervisor McCowen on the use permit process, and also more than happy to work with the ad hoc on the other side. So I think we are, we, this is a completely workable option.
But our understanding is that priority will be given to the ad hocks work to work with CDFA, CDFW, and that, those pathways.
Yes, if that's the board's desire, yes, it is.
Okay. Okay, then we're good with that plan? All right, I guess we are. Okay, so let's see, it's 516. Let me turn to CEO Angelo. Is there anything that's critically important today that we need to make sure we cover?
Chair Haschek, we have a couple of things. Chair Haschek, this is CEO Angelo. To answer your question, we have a Notice Public Hearing, 5E. And we also have the CARES Act presentation to this board. There's been some questions by this board, and we wanted to, we wanted to go over the CARES Act. We also have Project Home Key. I mean, we have some items on this agenda that we would like to complete this evening. So can we just quickly try to go through these items? We've been on, we've been on this one item, this last item, since 10:30 this morning. And there's a lot of business on this agenda. So if possible, could we go through some of these other items? Is the board willing to stay past 5:30 and go through these other items? So we have CARES Act and Project Home Key, which are both funding issues that we would like some direction from the board. And then, as Supervisor Brown pointed out, we do have a Notice Public Hearing, 5E. So those are three items right there.
Okay, are we good to, I'm good to stay. So are we good to go with those items?
Mr. Chair, I certainly am. And in deference to, I assume we no doubt have public for item 5E, potentially, you could go to that first. I think it's a pretty straightforward issue, honestly. If the public will keep their comments short and to the point, we can probably take care of that one pretty quickly.
Supervisor McCowen, thank you for your input. Okay, so if it's not a problem for the CEO, we can go to item 5E first?
It's absolutely fine, Chair Haschek. Thank you.
CEO?
Yeah, please. Go to the Notice Public Hearing first. Thank you.
Okay, we will, if we're all right, we'll keep moving on then. Agenda item number 5E, Notice Public Hearing, Discussion and Possible Action Including Adoption of an Ordinance Rezoning R. 2019-0014, the Fracchia Road and Bisbee Avenue Neighborhoods, 29 Legal Parcels totaling 129.64 plus or minus acres, adding a commercial cannabis prohibition, combining district to the current zoning designations of rural residential, agricultural, and rangeland. Sponsor is Planning and Building Services. So Clerk, has public notice been established?
Yes, proper notice has been established.
Okay, so we're going to open the public hearing. The deputy clerk, is there any correspondence or telephone calls received?
We received several pieces of written correspondence that have all been attached to the item and published. So they're all made available to the public and staff. We, any telecomment, we've received one telecomment request, and I believe that person is on the line. Yes.
Okay. Okay, staff?
Thank you, Chair Haschek, Julia Acker-Crogg, Chief Planner. I just want to briefly introduce Siobhan Holmes. I know she's been in front of the board before, when she was part of the Agriculture Department. She's come over to planning and building over a year ago. We're very happy to have her. And this is her first presentation in front of the board in her new role. So with that, I will let Siobhan take it away.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Supervisors. I am Siobhan Holmes, Staff Planner, Planning and Building Services, before you today to present the rezon application R. underscore 2019-0014. This application proposes to create a cannabis prohibition combining district, or alternatively referred to as a cannabis prohibition overlay. In response to vacant properties within the proposed district advertised on virtual real estate sites as potential cannabis farms, the group of property owners known as the Fracchia Road and Bisbee Avenue Neighborhoods felt negatively impacted by commercial cannabis operations, and collectively initiated the application for this rezon. To do so, the group collected 76% or 22 signatures of property owners within the proposed district of 29 parcels. At their meeting on April 16th, 2020, the Planning Commission unanimously adopted Resolution Number PC 2020-0003, and recommended that the Board of Supervisors adopt an ordinance to establish the prohibition district of 29 contiguous parcels of various addresses and assessor parcel numbers. The proposed district consists of approximately 130 acres of land, zoned rural residential, agriculture, and rangeland. If approved, the new district will be adjacent to the Boonville Road-Woody Glen Cannabis Prohibition Combining District, which was established by this board December 4, 2018. The proposed rezon is statutorily exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Article 18, Section 15260, which provides that the common sense exemption applies to projects where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment. The proposed rezon is consistent with the Rural Residential, Rangeland, and Agricultural General Plan land use designations in Mendocino County Code Chapter 20.119. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors adopt the ordinance to rezon all applicable parcels and approve this rezon request to create a cannabis prohibition combining district R. underscore 2019-0014, the Fracchia Road and Bisbee Avenue Neighborhoods. I am happy to take any questions you may have.
Okay, are there any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. We'll go to public comment. Okay, if there's any public comment, could you please call in? Deputy clerk, is there anyone calling in for this issue?
Colleen Mack is on the line.
Hi, my name is Colleen Mack. I'm representing the Fracchia Road and Bisbee Avenue Neighborhoods. I will keep my comments short, and I appreciate your time. We originally applied for the prohibition ordinance in November citing safety, environmental, and privacy concerns. I've been listening to the board meeting today and realizing that during this COVID crisis, that it's even more important to keep our neighborhood safe. We are working from home. Our children are at home. This is our place of safety. And we cannot afford to have a commercial cannabis operation in the middle of our two neighborhoods. I urge you to approve this ordinance and to keep our neighborhood safe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments?
No, there are no more telecomments.
Okay. So staff, could you present your final remarks?
Thank you, Chair Haschek. We have no additional remarks.
Okay, thank you. And the public hearing is closed. Okay, the matter is now before the Board of Supervisors. Okay, is there a comment or a motion to be made?
I move approval, Mr. Chair.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Supervisor McCowen, seconded by Supervisor Brown.
And I just wanted to comment.
Yes, go ahead.
Very quickly, this is 5th district. So, sorry, Supervisor Williams, we jumped in your way.
I should be the one apologizing to you, Carrie.
Well, I would actually defer. We do have, I think by rule, that land use decisions, the option to make the first motion lies with the district supervisor. So I'm happy to withdraw my motion if Supervisor Williams would like to make a motion.
Let's call for a vote.
Okay, if there's no further comments, then we'll go to a vote. Deputy clerk, could you do a roll call vote?
Of course. Supervisor Williams?
Yes.
Supervisor McCowen?
Yes.
Supervisor Jordy?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Did you say Brown?
I did, yes. And Chair Haschek?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, very good. Then we'll go to Agenda Item Number 5C, Discussion and Possible Action Including Acceptance of a Presentation Regarding Updates to the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security, the CARES Act. Executive Office, CEO Angelo?
Thank you, Chair Haschek. In light of the late hour, I will just turn this over to Deputy CEO Darcy Antil.
Good evening, Chair Haschek, members of the board. I am here this evening to present an expenditure plan that will be submitted to the state September 1. The CARES Act established the Coronavirus Fund and appropriated $150 billion to the fund. Under the CARES Act, the fund is to be used to make payments to specified uses to the states and certain local governments. The CARES Acts provide that payments from the fund only be used to cover costs that are necessary expenditures incurred by the COVID-19 public health emergency, direct response, and secondary effects such as economic support. Expenditures occurred between March 1 of 2020 and December 30 of 2020. Expense report with calendar year-end projections is due to the state September 1 of 2020. The six expenditure categories are medical expenses, public health expenses, substantially dedicated payroll expenses, compliance with health order measures, mitigations and effects of the COVID-19, economic support, and other, any other COVID-19 expenses reasonably necessary to the function of the government that satisfies the broader eligibility criteria. The CARES Act limitations, funds cannot be used to backfill lost revenue, cannot be used as non-federal share of Medi-Cal, which is Medicaid, Medi-Cal in the state of California, payroll or benefits for employees' duties not substantially dedicated, workforce bonuses, damages. work for bonuses, damages by insurance, assistance to owners for property taxes and other disallowed in the U.S. Treasury report. So with that, we'll go to the projection screen that's in front of you. And we've lined out the total projection expenses that we estimate from March first through December thirtieth of twenty twenty. And you can see the various items lined out there with a total expenditure of twenty six million five. Then we move on to the March through December twenty twenty projections of CARES expenses. And again, our CARES funding was allocated to us at eight point nine million. Then you'll see the projected eligible expenses for FEMA. This is what we've determined thus far that may be eligible for FEMA. Again FEMA has very specific guidelines and that nine point seven can change as we move forward into this program. I would also like to point out that the project room key estimates on this as well as the great plates. That was through the dates that those programs ended, which was basically the end of July. So those amounts will be increased as those two programs were expanded additional thirty days by by the federal and state. Again, our room key is ramping down with less than ten rooms occupied to date. And then the great plates will continue and we are spending approximately six hundred thousand a month in the great plates area. And I've listed out our other grants and where we're looking at spending those dollars at this time. Again, the money may shift, but you can see at the end, we're expecting roughly a total funding of twenty million with a big variable under the FEMA FEMA projects. And with a current projected expense of the twenty six point five. And due to the timing, I'm keeping this as short as possible. And at this point, I would turn it back over to CEO Angelo if she has any comments.
Thank you. My only comment is that usually we are really very careful with the money and we know that even during the fires in two thousand and seventeen, while we were in response and recovery, we had a little more control over the money. With this pandemic, what's been important is that we could respond quickly and and the greater coverage for our response, the better. So this has been an extremely expensive emergency with a response and not quite into recovery yet. So I don't have anything more to say except we are we are doing our best to stretch the dollar and to make sure that we can cover all of our costs. And that as we as we move forward, that we attempt to look at the future as this board knows with every step we take. So I would refer this back to Chair hashtag and the board for questions. And also I want to thank Deputy CEO Darcy Antle because she has really been very vigilant in in watching the different funding streams and applying for money as quickly as she can. So thank you.
Yes, we certainly appreciate all the work that went into this. Are there any further questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Yes Supervisor Brown.
Thank you. It was said or stated, I believe, six hundred thousand for the great plate. Is that correct?
Correct, yes, six hundred, six hundred thousand per month. Yes, Darcy Antle, Deputy CEO.
Okay, thank you. But our actual cost should only be six, six and a quarter, I believe.
Our actual cost to the county at this point is, we would estimate about seven percent of that is the cost to the county. So you can see where I have it broken out under the FEMA at one point two million. And then I have us sitting at that eighty, eighty one, nine, eight for to the CARES Act, the seven percent to the CARES Act.
Thank you. You have to remember I'm blind. I don't have good broadband, so I can't see what's up on the screen. Sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, very good. Any further questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So on project Home Key. Oh, I see. Okay, I've answered my question. I did have a que, and I do really want to thank you for all the thought that went into this. It's, you know, you can see from combining the different funding streams how you've done everything you can to protect the county and cover all these expenses. I did want to ask about mask up Mendo slash community outreach. Do we have a breakout for the cost of the mask up Mendo program by itself? Or is that all for mask up Mendo?
So Darcy Antle through the chair. As you can see on this, we have mask up Mendo and the community outreach right there at seven hundred and fifty thousand. At this point, we have put together, I think it's a two, two contracts for roughly two hundred thousand dollars for mask up Mendo. We expect that to to, you know, through the end of the year, that would grow up as well as possibly the community outreach. As you know, we had a lot of code enforcement and the SIU folks out on the weekend doing additional work over on the coast.
All right.
Yes, so I know through NCO. So is what part of that is contracted through NCO also?
Correct, yeah. I, I, yes, Darcy Antle Deputy CEO. Off the top of my head with NCO, it's roughly a hundred and fifty thousand and roughly fifty thousand to chamber.
And then the other contract that currently signed was two hundred thousand? Or that was, we, that's the two and the two hundred thousand. So then we have five hundred and fifty that has not yet been contracted. Is that accurate?
Correct. We're projecting to use that in the next five months.
And could a portion of that be used for enhanced outreach to the Latinx community beyond what the chambers and NCO may do?
I certainly expect that that would be the case, but I would defer to CEO Angelo. And I know they have something working with the Latinx. I'm just not privy of all those details right now.
Yeah, I'd love to hear a bit on that because I think that's a critical part of our outreach would be to work directly with the Latinx community. And I would imagine some of our presenters that we had on June twenty first. Thank you. Or July twenty first.
Okay, CEO Angelo, could you speak to that?
Sure Chair hashtag. North Coast Opportunities has been working with the Latinx community. We went with NCO because they have staff and they're ready to go. They actually are up and running within a week. And so our concern would only be that if we went with a community based organization or or, you know, private entities that were not able to bring up an outreach and education program, you know, within a week or two, that we certainly would lose time and possibly not spend the money. With that said, we're absolutely open to any organization that that can go ahead and assist us and enhance the outreach to the Latinx community that NCO is already doing. So if there is an organization out there, possibly one that already presented to us when Supervisor hashtag had the presentation here a couple of weeks ago, we're certainly willing to speak with them. They could submit a proposal to either Deputy CEO Antle or myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam CEO for that. And I would certainly encourage Supervisor hashtag, who we have designated to work as our lead with the Latinx community, to work with that group quickly and see what they may be able to put together. I think they're a pretty resilient group. We've got, and they also have a farther reach than just the Ukiah Valley. So they're represented a bit more broader countywide. And I won't go through the list of groups. I'm looking at them now. But I think it would serve us well to work with them. It could be critical in helping either prevent us from going on the watch list or getting us off it if we wind up on it. So again, hopefully Supervisor hashtag and you will be working closely with the Latinx leaders. Thank you.
Yes, certainly. Thank you for those comments. I appreciate it and we will. That is our commitment to work closely with them and try to see what we can do. Okay Supervisor Jordy.
Yeah, I just have a quick question about one of the line items. It says the OptumServe slash rent is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I guess I was under the impression that the state was providing that service for free.
Darcy Antle Deputy CEO through the chair. The Optum Serve, the operations of Optum Serve and the and the staffing is supplied by the state. The county is responsible for the facility rent. So the rent on what we're currently in the fine arts building down at the fairgrounds. And I believe that's roughly a seven to nine month rental on that.
So I'm just trying to understand this. We have a state owned fairground. The state owns the fairgrounds. And we're paying the state fairgrounds a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to use a facility to be part of a state response to the pandemic.
Mind you, a facility that couldn't host gatherings during this period.
And also a facility that is underfunded by the state.
Okay Deputy CEO Antle.
Through the chair, yes, that's a correct statement. We do have a contract with, I'm forgetting the the Fair Association that we're contracted with to to use that building. Yes.
It's Redwood Empire, but it's the twelfth Agricultural Association District.
Any further questions?
CEO Angelo, I just want to comment on that, that yes, everything that's said and it sounds convoluted, but that's all correct. But this, our Redwood Empire Fairgrounds has not been able to have any activities. They have, I don't know that they've been able to cover their costs without this contract. So I do throw that out there that the hundred and thirty thousand, as convoluted as it appears to be, I'm thinking is staying local here with the fairgrounds. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Ms. Angelo, I think that is a very correct statement. They are an independent state agency, so to speak. And financially, they have to make it on their own. And you're correct when you say they have had no funds coming in due to COVID. So basically, we might be saving our fairgrounds.
Thank you.
Okay, not seeing any further comments. We will accept the report, the presentation. And thank you very much for this information. Okay, moving on to item five D. Discussion and possible action including direction to staff regarding project Home Key. Okay, I forgot to get public comment at the last item five C. So was there any public comment Deputy clerk?
This is Deputy Clerk Lindsey Dunham. And no, we didn't have any requests for tele comment on that one.
Okay, very good. Okay, so item five D.
Chair hashtag, I'm going to have Deputy CEO Darcy Antle handle this. But again, you know, I would like to thank the board for continuing on with this meeting. This is, you know, these items to us are very important and we really wanted to make sure that the board had the information. So thank you for taking the time to stick with us this evening. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Deputy CEO Antle. Thank you.
Darcy Antle Deputy CEO through the chair. Project Room Key has served over fourteen thousand individuals throughout the state. As your board is aware, your tireless county staff has helped provide housing to over a hundred and sixty four households in Mendocino County since the beginning of Project Room Key. I am here to today to provide information to your board regarding Project Home Key, which is the next phase in the state's efforts to protect vulnerable homeless populations from the pandemic. Overall, there's six hundred million funding available that is split into two buckets. First bucket, five hundred and fifty million from CARES Acts Act for acquisitions with expenditure deadlines of December thirtieth, twenty twenty. Second bucket, fifty million from State General Fund for operation subsidies with expenditure deadline of June thirty, twenty twenty two. The target population for this funding is people experiencing or at risk of experiencing homelessness. The priority application period closes on August thirteenth. This is when the Department of Housing and Community Development, ALAW, also known as HCD, will hold the funds based on a geographic location. Despite the nearly impossible timeline, your county staff is working aggressively to pursue this grant funding, knowing that it's a unique opportunity to increase capacity of our community's social safety net. After the August thirteenth deadline, the application will continue to be accepted through September twenty ninth. But we would then lose the geographic hole, making the application more process, more competitive and putting our county in competition with larger urbanized areas. Should the project receive funding, the acquisition must be complete prior to December thirty, twenty twenty and the facility must be occupied within ninety days of close of escrow. Eligible uses is acquisition or rehabilitation of motels, hotels or hostels, master leasing of properties, acquisition of other sites, conversion of non residential to residential, purchase of affordable covenants and restrictions, relocation costs during rehabilitation of existing housing units. Mendocino's County allotment is part of seventeen million balance to the state. Balance, the balance is to the state. So our seventeen million, we are competing against twenty two rural counties. The funding will cover a hundred thousand per room with no match requirement. Match requirements are required at the cost of a hun, over a hundred thousand per room. Currently, county staff is looking at using grant funding opportunities to support the acquisition of the motel in Ukiah Valley area to be converted into a transitional and or permanent housing. While the county is the leading, the acquisition of the property through this project, the participants of both community partners and internal HHSA programs is critical to the success of the project. As we routinely routinely see in Mendocino County, our programs are stronger, are more effective when we can foster collaborative across the board and invest in program goals and outcomes. To that end, county staff has sent out a survey to local community partners to solicit input and project concepts from our partners. We are currently waiting on the community partners to respond to our survey if they would be interested in partnering in the project. We requested all community partners' response be received by August fifth. The responses to date that we have received thus far are very supportive, offering about a broad range of services to fund support of acquisition, operational support, classes and other programs for onsite for the residents that will end up living there. With that, it concludes my report. I'll turn it back to CEO Angelo.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. We, as Deputy CEO Antle said, we we have been working with Health and Human Services, Tammy Moss Chandler, Megan Van Zant. And so we also have had conversations with the city manager in Ukiah. So we think we have tremendous support within the Ukiah Valley for this project with our partners recognizing. uh, with our partners recognizing that this is something that's necessary and something that could actually happen and really benefit the community. So we appreciate the board's support on this action. Thank you.
All right. Are there any comments from the board?
Yeah, I have a comment. Um, I think it was late last week, uh, the CEO invited me to a meeting with Supervisor Jody and, um, some representatives from Fort Bragg City Council to talk about potential projects on the coast. And, uh, this was, my understanding or my impression is the CEO knows often the coast gets left behind. Services are prioritized in Ukiah, but we don't get those same services to the outlying areas, especially the coast. There's, there's a letter on file that, um, suggests that the CEO was pushing for a partic, particular direction. I don't, I didn't see her pushing so much as making sure everyone had an opportunity to participate in this program. I'm mixed on it. I, the short timeline is difficult. Uh, there will, will be a NIMBY aspect to it if we suggest doing it on the coast. I don't know that the 5th district makes sense, uh, structurally, looking at the state's wants to provide these services in areas with infrastructure. Uh, you know, I have one city in my district and it's rather small. So, uh, the, the, if, if we were to have a facility on the coast, it would probably be in the 4th district, probably near Fort Bragg. If that community doesn't want it, that's okay. I think, you know, we can, we can move, move forward. But we need to be clear with the public that we have the option and we're consciously choosing to not exercise it. What I don't want to hear from a year from now is why did all of the money go to Ukiah? Why didn't we get services on the coast? This is the time, if we want services on the coast, we would need to speak up.
So I'd like to add a little bit more about that meeting. So, yeah, that meeting was actually, um, at my request that we had that meeting with the city of Fort Bragg because they had outreach, uh, to me. And, um, so, uh, I think it, that's an accurate summer, summarization that, um, the feedback that I got from the city initially and then that we all got in that meeting, um, from the representatives of the city was that they want really a deliberative process, um, maybe a joint process with the city and the county to look at housing in general on the coast, um, which would include housing for homeless, um, and that we would identify appropriate sites either in the county, outside the city, and/or in the city. And that once we've had that consensus, that community consensus, then we would, um, seek out grants. It's my opinion that we are likely to see many of the same types of grant programs that we've seen from Governor Newsom coming from a new president in the next two years. I think, um, there's going to be substantial money for housing as we've seen in the state at a national level in the next two years. And I think it, it would be wise for us to do the planning now as to what kind of housing we want and where we want it. Uh, that's clearly what the city of Fort Bragg would like to have that, that conversation with the county. And, um, I was hoping that after we, um, resolve this issue of the current application, that we would, um, ask the chair to appoint an ad hoc committee of Supervisor Williams and myself, um, as discussed with the city of Fort Bragg, to just look at housing in general on the Mendocino Coast, um, which would also be a conduit for conversations with the city of Fort Bragg in the next, you know, six months, year and a half timeframe.
Supervisor Jody, would you like that done today?
Um, yeah, but it, I would, but I would separate from the action recommended by staff.
Right. Any further comments about this?
I support everything discussed.
Pardon?
I'm in support of everything that's been discussed, including the ad hoc of Supervisors Williams and Jody.
Okay. All right. So, so we've received the report and we need to provide direction to staff.
Well, I think the direction is for them to proceed in the, um, in making the application and wishing them success.
Right. Okay. Are we all good with that direction? Hearing no, no problem? Okay, we'll accept that direction. We'll give this direction to the staff. Are we clear on that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And since that issue is taken care of, I'd like to appoint that ad hoc of Williams and Jody to, to deal with, um, the homeless issue on the coast.
Uh, I think, I think it's, my understanding was that it's about housing, not the homeless issue.
Okay, the housing issue.
Let's make sure, is that Supervisor Jody, is that right?
Yeah, it's looking at the broader issue of housing on the coast.
Okay. So it's going to be looking at housing on the coast. Is that good?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, very good. All right. So it seems like we are done with that. We're on to item 5F and 5G and 6A. Is there a CEO report?
Chair Hasjack, there is no CEO report this evening and additionally, uh, there is no, uh, there is nothing to report under 5G as well. Thank you.
Okay. And supervisor reports? Can, um, is that something that we can off until next time?
I have one quick item, Mr. Chair. I'd like to inquire about an item. I, uh, believe I've been informed by staff that a presentation by HHSA and the Continuum of Care on the, uh, Mendocino County Strategic Plan for Homelessness will be coming forward August 18th. I'd hopefully can confirm that.
Okay. Staff, is that on the forecasting?
Yeah, Chair Hasjack, uh, that is coming, yes, from Health and Human Services. It is a 30-minute item on the 18th, the strategic plan.
Is there any other supervisory reports that need to be made? Questions? Okay, hearing none?
Supervisor Hasjack?
Yeah, Supervisor Brown.
I just want to mention that, you know, at, at least publicly, all of us attended a multitude of meetings, um, in between. So this is the second time we've done without supervisors' reports. I agree, um, because the hour is late, um, but I don't want the public to think that we haven't been doing our job. Thank you.
Okay. And I'd just like to say that, um, the Wildlife Services ad hoc is going to meet tomorrow, or Thursday. The Emergency Access Roots ad hoc met, um, last Thursday. And that the Law Enforcement Advisory Board ad hoc is, has been meeting regularly with the sheriff and with stakeholders, you know, of the community. And so we're moving along and we will bring an item back to the board on the 18th. Okay, anything else? All right. Seeing none?
Mr. Chair, uh, just, just because it's timely, uh, LAPCO did approve the Mendocino City Community Services District MSR SOI update at our meeting Monday. Thank you.
Okay, very good. So with that, we will adjourn the meeting at 5:57. And thank you all for your dedication.